I'd like to call the order, the Manona City Council Committee of the Whole. Review of 2018 to 2022 Capital Improvements Program and 2018 Capital Borrowing. Will the Kirk please call the rule?
Alder Kerr? Here. Alder Holmquist is on his way, right?
Right.
Okay. Alder Spade?
Here.
Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder Kitzler?
Here.
Mayor O'Connor?
Here.
Do we say that, Bledger, Joan? It doesn't say so yet.
We don't really need to.
Okay. Okay, well, we will move on to Item C, Council Review and Discussion of 2018-2022 Capital Improvements Program and 2018 Capital Borrowing. First of all, Mr. Houtaker will give an overview of the capital budget. And everyone should have gotten... I asked Mark to email you these this afternoon. I don't know if you...
I have a hard copy if people need them. I'll take out a copy.
I always found a hard copy useful.
Yeah, I take one too.
Do you have one for me, Mark?
Just kind of start the process over here, the 2018 budget, the five-year capital plan in this two. First, before I start the slideshow, I just want to, in my presentation, I just want to start at the beginning, where it's how this all starts, and where we get to this point right now. So basically, we sat down, myself, with the Mayor O'Connor, and then also City Minister Woodall, and we kind of talked to this and what the process would be, when the dates we wanted, and kind of the direction we wanted with the staff. We really focused on to make sure the committees were going to look at the budgets. We wanted them to look at two. Each committee wanted these to go to them twice. I'm going to pass, sometimes they only see it once. We're trying to focus on, make sure the committee saw the capital budgets twice. So from that process, each department head proposes what they think they want to do, they think of the items they want to propose, and they bring it to their committees. The committee would approve their budgets, you know, they add or subtract, but they would approve it. And that gets put into the spreadsheet, into our capital plan. So then we meet, each individual department head meets with the mayor. So they come in kind of the same process, what they just do with myself, April, and the mayor, Mary. And then they sit down, and they explain, go through each budget. They're the budgets that was approved by the city council, or the committees, and they'll go through, explain why they're proposing it, and kind of, kind of what we're going to do here, kind of go over what the reasoning, why they propose it. And then we give Mary time to digest what was proposed, and she has the option. So this is considered the mayor's budget. So this, what we're proposing is the mayor's budget, because she, in the end, she technically doesn't have a vote. So she took all the recommendations that was from the committees and department heads, and she formed her own capital budget. So then there's going to be a page two, so there's some items that were added at this point, some that were subtracted, that we'll go over, and we put it all together, and this is the point we're at now, from the starting point. So I don't know if they have the... If they could put the presentation up. Oh, I have to do one of those things.
I bet.
I bet. I can tell right now. It's not...
Pardon?
I got to do this last time.
Well, if you have the presentation in your pack, I'll just kind of start from there until I can get it up and running. So page two of the presentation, it's just... So we have a legal debt limit. You...
You stall him, and I'll keep messing with you.
It should be right up. So we have, there's a state statute, you only can borrow 5% of your equalized value. They call it the legal debt limit. It's based on 5% of your equalized value, so we receive our equalized value for 2017, so we're $1,262,810,000. And so 5% of that is $63,145,000. So that is our legal debt capacity. Currently, our total, at the end of the year, end of 2017, our total general debt outstanding will be $49,000, $70,000. And you subtract the 2018 principal payments to get what our... Get what our net general obligation debt outstanding is, which is the line that says $44,145,000 is what we have basically outstanding. So there, so we take what the legal debt capacity is, is the $63,140 minus what we have, $44,145. So we're allowed to borrow up, it's almost $19 million, it's $18,995,500. So 28% is unused, so that's our legal debt capacity. We can't go over that number. It's against the law to do that. So if you go to the next page, it's kind of... So our unused debt limit is $18,995,500. There is some required borrowing that we are aware of right now, so TIF number nine. There is the sewer lateral move, there's some developers agreement that's coming up, some other costs in there to a total amount that we know is accounted for is $4,200,000. So that leaves us with $14,795,500. And what's proposed in here is $5,462,110, leaves us with $9,333,390. That $5,462,000, that does include the TIF that's required, it's not part of the $4.2 million, so I'll explain, we'll see that when we get further in. And then 2019, put that in there, so we'll be paying off almost $6 million in 2019.
The 20, that really is 2017? It's not supposed to say 2018?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, and you said the $5,462 includes TIF.
Yeah.
Does, let's see, where did it go? Is there anything not, because on the first page of the, the summary page, for 28, oh, it's revenue, okay, from the bar. It's got $5,889,000, $910 in expenditures.
$5,889,000, so that's...
Oh, I see where it is, I'm sorry.
So water and sewer is excluded from that.
Yeah.
So they don't affect, so revenue bonds are not affected.
Okay, all right, thanks.
So the current debt outstanding, as a 1231, it's broken down like this. The city, that $49 million, the city, which is the general fund, the non-TIF stuff, non-sour, non utilities, is $22,354,264. So you can see it's less than half of the total debt outstanding. Then there's TIF two, which we paid off next year. TIF four, which is considered Manona Drive. TIF five is Garden Circle, which is where majority of the debt is. TIF six, would be called Meriter and UW Clinics. TIF seven, that is Fairway Glen area. TIF eight is Trista. We currently have no debt borrowed for TIF nine, that affects the levy limit. There will be, next year we'll have something in there for that, but currently we do not. Storm, it's $3 million. And then there's some times we don't use revenue bonds for water and sewer. They were, at one time, they were for these, they're called BABS, and we had some situation where we were trying to save money, we used Build America Bonds, and we had to use GEO notes, and this kind of relates to that, and some minor stuff too. So that's our total outstanding debt by each category. And we do have some revenue bonds, which is water and sewer, which is $5,440,000. Here's kind of our future debt payments, what we pay off in the future. See, pretty consistent, it does go up. 2020, there's a large lump sum payment in '20 and '21 that will be refinanced, but those, so they throw it off, I mean, they're not, well, we'll actually pay those two years. I think and believe in 2021, we'll start paying basically $1.2 million per year in Garden Circle TIF, so we'll start paying off heavily in that TIF coming up.
So Mark, before you get, the future debt payments, is that as of right now, or is that assuming that we adopt?
As of right now, not included these, right in there, not including the current stuff.
Okay.
And this next page is just the categories by different general, TIFs, water, sewer, and storm, how it's broken out per year, so you can match those up to the page before. You know, general fund, we're paying what, $2.6, and $2.9, 18, 19 TIFs. There are $1.6, $1.5, and you'll start getting the big ones for Garden Circle, it looks like 2020. Sewer's almost paid off, storms will increase a little bit, and water. This is, this page, this is page one of your books, if you want to refer to that, because it's probably going to be easier to read. So this is your five-year plan, the total expenditures on top, by each category, administration, buildings, law, fire EMS, and so on down. What's projected through 18, 19, 20, 21, 22. So that's, so the next five years, we're looking at 20, almost $26 million that people are kind of looking at, and half of that relates to public works, and the other portion relates to parks. Public works is included where some of the TIF cost is, that would be, once we start working on the infrastructure, so that's about $2.5, that $13 million, $850 relates to, the total relates to TIF nine. So you can see where everybody's forecast for the next five years. Underneath that, there's a thing called revenues, and how we pay for these. So GEO proceeds, that's mainly your general items for the next five years, so $60 million you're looking at over five years. Water is $1.3 over five, sewer $866, storm $1.8. Cable revenue, $100,000, you know, TIF $5.5, and then other revenues. Other revenues is offsets, a lot of them are grants or leftover fund balance we're applying to a certain project. So we kind of go underneath that, you'll see kind of breakout in total, it's kind of the summary. So these, the first part is, when it says one-year borrowing for general TIF, water, Those are the non-water and sewer utilities, and then there's water and sewer revenue bonds. So in total, they, they'll tie back, total ties back to 18, 19, so they tie right back up. So then I looked, the sum of A's, if you look at the summary of A's, there's general TIF, water and sewer, if we would use it, or storm. They equal the $5,462,110. If you see that line, total will be affected by limit, I don't know why, limit, well, total effect of limiting. So, sum of A's, so $5.4, $6.6, $6.2, $3.6, these will all, and $1.6, these all affect your debt limit. Underneath that, your capacity, kind of the future where capacity looks like, so our debt capacity we can use, which was less than TIF amount, was the $14,795,500. So if you track $5.4 right above that, from the 14, we'll have unused of 9.3, and so on, the next year in 2019, our debt capacity will be $5.51 million, $333, minus what we're thinking about borrowing, so it brings it down to 8.6, and you can kind of so on down the line. So the one thing you're looking at, if you're kind of looking at that, the unused amount is, to think about is where do you want your public safety building? If that's something that's, we want to look at, because those numbers right there, the unused, will not probably get you at a public safety building, so that's something we'll have to think about where we want. So, you know, if we think that go ahead and do a public safety building and fill it, figure it in, we'll have to look in five years and find, figure out where to cut, or where to adjust some of these numbers in the future, but that's, if you're looking at, right now, I mean, you really couldn't start looking at, I assume the bill is probably going to be $10 to $15 million at least, from what I've been hearing, but I could be wrong. So it's something to look at, plus you got to buy the land, we got to buy the land too, which is not incorporated. So it's something to really think about in the future, any other projects. So the potential borrowing would be the riverfront, these are just kind of common ones, riverfront, any more developers agreements, you know, if we end up doing the developers agreements on, say, like, north Manona Drive eventually, down the road, things like that, or some in the, some, I know there's been talks down in the UW clinic, Meriter area, if there's everything down there, the White Horse property. So those things that could pop up in the next five years, so that's something to really think about. I mean, like, make sure we have money available if there's a large emergency that we need to borrow for. We did, luckily we had this, I don't know if most people are aware of the PCP issue we have down at the Winnicott. You know, if we had to do that in one year, we, you know, three or four years ago, we found out, we had to start, two years ago we found out, we had to clean that up, you know, luckily the DNR's let us do it over so many years, the cleanup. But if you had to do it in one year, we'd have to have emergency money to fill in that. So that's things to think about that pop up that we'll eventually might need. So this is kind of the borrowing we had for the last five years, you know, 2013, $5.4, 14, $3.1, $3.9, $2.9, $3 million. In 2013, majority of that was Manona Drive, that was the last year of Manona Drive payments, or some major items that are in this budget. So there's $200,000 for the new ambulance, $2.5, $2,550,000 that's required for TIF nine, which is in a developers agreement, the $200,000 for annual street program, I just did the items over $100,000, so. $300,000 for generators, street sweeper, $230, Wild Haven Park, $135,000, the boat launch at Tony Watha, $200,000, and then HVAC here, $370,000 to redo it all. So then, like I said, in the process, one of each department heads sits down with the mayor.
Excuse me, Mark, did you have the ambulance in there?
Yeah, the first one.
Oh, first one.
So we sat down with departments, sat down with the mayor. She listens to all of them and makes her recommendations, based on what she's saying, and what's important, you know, you know, trying to balance what we need to spend, what's a need, what's a why, and what areas, you know, we're looking at. So right now, and we'll get more detail with the media room, there's some changes to that media room budget. We will, and gets up here, we'll kind of detail that out, we're kind of redoing that. There is, we added LED updates, was a new one that was added in there, it was, these weren't approved by the, I'm sorry, these weren't approved by committees, so these are just added outside of committees. City Hall air conditioner is another one that was added. And then things that were removed, removed from the budget. So we'll talk about that too when we get to the media budget, there was stuff removed to add, to get what we're, the project we were going to propose in there. Police, the garage walls and floor painting, and the fire bathrooms, and the fire bay remodel. A lot of that thinking though, behind that is where we have the public safety building. We want to spend all that money, which is, we don't want to spend all that money in there if we're actually going to do a, if you're actually going to look at redoing a public, making, getting a new public safety building. One thing I forgot to add on here for new, we did put in that Bray study in there, more money for that, to actually look at the buildings. I forgot to add that, but that is one thing that the mayor added, is to take a look at it and see where we're at with that, so. And that all kind of went hand in hand with removals. And kind of back again to what you need to think about is riverfront, unknown expenditures, public safety building, you know, reduced borrowing for future projects like public safety and future TIF projects. Here are some items in the future that are really making up some of these long-term items over the five years, so. $150,000 for the 911, that's been moved back twice now, and to be, to be kind of, I know that, I think we're looking into that, and where we're going to, if we're going to do 911, I know that's all going to work, so we move that back one more year. Bridge Road, McKenna Road, that's been moved back, we were looking at that actually in 2017, but that's in 2019 now. And Bridge Road has kind of been delayed too, based on the riverfront, so that's kind of where we're at with that. The dredging for the actual PCB dredging is $375,000 in there. Comes some bigger ones, Winnicott Park, $3.2 million over the next three or four years. Huska Park, a million dollars, Stone Bridge, $500,000. J.CAD, the community center remodel in there in 2020 for a million. So these are some large items in here, they're making up those five, over the five-year. Pool addition, we have monies, we have money in the future for, you know, reviewing it and design, we don't have the actual money in there for actually doing construction, but that would be after the five years, probably six or seven, so. If anybody has any questions?
Doug?
Yeah. Sort of questions or maybe more comments, but just to go back again to your, what you were talking about on the bottom of the summary page, the unused amount that we, that we have, which this year will be $9,333,390.
Correct.
So that is, and that line, as it goes into the future, is what we would have available for anything outside the capital budget, as you said, for example, a public safety building.
Right.
So if we were, you know, one of the possibilities, I think it's been talked about, is in addition to doing a public safety building, is also doing a new community center, senior center building, which obviously, for sure not going to get anywhere close to doing both of those for $9 million. So in effect, we need to work on getting that unused line up higher.
To do these projects, yes.
And even if we pass, even if it was approved by referendum, you still can't exceed the 5%.
You still can't exceed the 5%.
Okay. But one of the things that got my attention in looking at the whole plan, I guess, was, and I know we're only going to be approving the 2018 budget, but in looking, looking at it, and looking at next year, 2019, where we're, it's right now sitting at just under 8.1 million, and I was just, and I'll probably have some questions for a couple of department heads on this, and I've talked to them about, you know, what are some projects that are scheduled right now for next year, or for 2019, you know, for the next budget, 2019, that could be pushed out, at least, you know, pushed out a year, and I think they'll have some ideas on that. For one, you know, I don't, we have, we've never had a capital budget of 8.1, and I don't think there was, you know, this is, those of you who have been here a while, that tends to happen all the time, that sort of the next budget ends up with a bunch of projects in it, that all it means is they didn't get, they're on the list, but they didn't get approved this year, so it's not, no big surprise, but I think it's something that we should all be having in our minds, and, you know, try to give staff some direction on what which ones are the projects that, that we want to make sure that, you know, to keep in for next year, and what are the, for 2019, and what things could be delayed, so.
I would agree. I mean, if you're looking at all these buildings, it is, we, we're going to need the money to do those projects.
Alder Kitzler?
Can you explain, Mayor, somebody, how a referendum works, and why you'd go to referendum if you can't go above the levy limit anyways? Because, isn't it technically, couldn't we spend all of this, you know, debt capacity, which would be irresponsible, but couldn't we spend it all?
You could spend it all.
But what, what's the purpose of a referendum, I guess, then?
Referend, you can do referen, well, referendum would be more for the operating levy, so you can exceed the operating levy, because you're only allowed, like, a lot of times it's 2% per year, and if you get a new building, there's all kinds of costs that comes with it.
So you could do a referendum for operating, but not?
Not for, you can, you can approve, like, I know we did a library, they did a referendum to, to see if everybody wanted part of this portion of the library, but to go over the debt limit, the legal debt limit, by state law, you can't do a...
Okay.
The library referendum was just advisory.
Just advisory, yeah, just, but to do an operating, I mean, do a debt limit, you can't go exceed that number, so.
Okay.
But you can, for the operating, you can do that.
So it was advisory, to basically see if people really want us, want the council at that time to actually spend this money.
Right. And that may be a good idea for any kind of a public safety building or whatever, also just to get public support. April?
And we will have our bond advisor here at the next council meeting, so we'll be able to get a little bit deeper into some of the debt mechanics and how it works, so hold some of those thoughts and questions, because we can get a little more deeper into it next meeting.
Well, we can have many things, we'll get into it deeper, but I think we need, the council needs to be thinking about these, you know, especially the spending side of it.
Exactly.
Jeff can help us figure out the paying for it side, and the bonding and so forth.
We're having him come to explain, especially for council members who haven't heard his explanation before, just so people have a better idea of how the process works, so. Alder Spade?
I wanted to make a few comments that may or may not be helpful to others. I feel like, I think I've been through this process nine times, and every time we go through it, I feel like I have a big epiphany, because, you know, like, the first few years, it was just completely overwhelming, and nothing you said ever made sense to me, but I don't think it was you, it was me. But I do think also that the presentations are maybe getting better too, like, or maybe it's always been in front of us, like, I never really understood the debt limit constraint. Maybe you've talked about it before, but it's very clear to me now. What was always clear to me in years past is that we're adding additional debt, but we're also paying off a big chunk of debt. So it's almost like, to put it in terms of a homeowner, you know, if you take out a home improvement loan for a project, but you also pay off a bunch of home improvement debt, the question is, you know, how much debt did you have at the beginning of the year, and how much debt did you have at the end of the year? And there's some fluctuation here, but by and large, the trend has been that the city has remained roughly on an even keel. We tend to pay off approximately what we borrow year after year, right? I mean...
Yeah, yeah, I would agree. The biggest years would have been TIF, Manona Drive, Phase Two and Three were not in TIFs, so they were some large debt years.
Right.
So they kind of thrown off some of the debt stuff too, for the general portion, but all in all, if you go back to this one screen, what we're paying per year, you can see it, so 2018, it shows we're paying off $2.6 million, kind of goes to what you're saying, you know, and what we're actually borrowing for the general portion is $2.6, so. And what we're actually borrowing for the general portion is two point six, so that's actually same as what we're, so that number's right on, so if you look at that, if you look at here, so, it goes to your point, um, and that's most, lately we've been borrowing what we've been paying off, but before, we had Manono Drive, was a little bit different, but yeah.
Right. And so it seems like we're right around that eighty to eighty-five percent of debt capacity number, year after year. And so some of these big projects, we're gonna have to decide, you know, do we have to hold off on those, because we have this much bigger project that we're thinking about? I mean, that's why planning for something like the public safety building really is a five to ten-year process, because you couldn't just insert it into next year's budget. We don't have the debt capacity for it.
No.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm saying the same thing that Alder Woods said, but just trying to say it a slightly different way, to make sure I understand it, and also to help us all really flesh it out, because.
Right, especially when you look at, you know, the future that we've talked about, you know, you got three point two million dollars, uh, you know, and parks alone is about five million dollars coming up, so I think that's something.
Right.
That you'd have to look at, if those projects are something you wanna do in the future, 'cause that's a huge chunk of money right there.
And the other thing, I mean, the public safety building, and I know this is something we're not gonna be talking about, 'cause it's a specific project tonight, but I, it's something that I think about a lot. You know, we pay right now as a city to maintain these buildings that are fifty to sixty years old. They're also not very efficient buildings, so they're expensive to heat and cool, and they're expensive to maintain. So the city might, you know, that big investment might end up having a considerably positive impact on our overall operating expenses moving forward.
Yep.
Whereas every time we build a new park structure, or add a facility that we don't have, we're having to staff that facility, or clean that facility, or put lighting. And so this has been an issue for the council in the last few years, you know? We've, we've done some great improvements to the city, but we've added operating expenses.
Yeah.
The, the good thing to think about and plan for with this big potential project of rebuilding either one of our major facilities, is that there could be some real operating savings, once we do those things.
Yes.
So, I'm just throwing that out there.
And I think part of this whole discussion too, is also these big items we have coming up, is part of the reason I included a lot of these smaller things in this year, that I kinda like, some of these just keep coming back every year, and I'd like to just kinda get them off the table if we could, hopefully, because I know we have this big stuff coming.
Yeah.
Um, and Brad has also come up with a proposal for new LED lighting, which should save us a lot of money, so we are, some of these things are things that should help us, in terms of operating also. Brian?
Mark, can you help explain how the borrowing that went on to the library, of how that seemed to be either in people's mind, or in how it was being paid, it seemed to be a separate number?
It didn't, it didn't get flushed out on, yeah, thanks.
So basically, I think, I wasn't here when they did the referendum, so basically, I think the way that council was at that time, they wanted to s- so they did advisory referendum to actually build it, there was no levy limits at that time, so they didn't need a levy limit. So my understanding is that the council wanted at that time, I don't know if it was part of the referendum, they wanted that number, um, broke out, so that's why we break out the library debt service, because that was a requirement, I believe, in that. But that had no effect on the le- I mean, going over capacity or anything like that. But it was broken out because it was, I think, the city council required it at the time.
Alderman Stolper requested that. He wanted everybody to think every year when they paid their taxes about how much the library was costing them.
I believe that was.
I think that was basically the, the rationale.
You mean, not enough?
Right. Yeah. Anything else?
Nope, that was helpful, thanks.
Okay, well, I think we'll get the staff up here, so people can go home. Diane Mickelbank, the senior center? And Mark, are these in order by the way they're appearing, or from the book, or if you wanna tell us where we are?
One ten. I was already working on it.
One ten.
Just, Jennifer knows, anybody knows, these people, well, anytime you can ask these people questions, anytime, just so you know the process too, once we're done with this, anytime anybody wants to propose a budget, man, we already have one already, just send me an email, or just something quick that says I wanna add or subtract, and I'll get it, and I'll send it back to you to make sure that what I wrote, what you wanted is what you, um, expected.
Okay, so for two thousand eighteen, the senior center is proposing to upgrade our computer lab, um, this is to serve a couple of purposes, one, our lab hasn't been upgraded since two thousand nine, so it's time, um, and the proposal is to do, um, computers that they're microform computers, and will mount the monitors onto the walls, so it will also improve some space issues in that particular room. So, I'm pretty excited about this change, um, and so it'll do two purposes. We had some additional IT needs that, um, have come to people's attention, and they are going to be addressed. Uh, we don't have a working projector for speakers, so in the IT budget that Leah is gonna talk about later, there is a projector, uh, proposed in there for the senior center, and, um, we had a laptop that wasn't working, so now we have one that was refurbished from staff that got a new, an updated computer, so now we do have a working laptop. So, if everything gets approved, that's proposed, I think we're gonna be in good shape, IT-wise, um, for two thousand eighteen.
Any questions?
Just one. So, as I recall, in the past, or maybe it was discussions, that seemed like senior center wasn't being included in the IT budget, that sounds like maybe that going, this year and going forward, that it is going to be, so when you do need a new laptop, it'll be, it should be in there, right?
Yes, so everything now, if, nothing was purchased by donations or anything like that, now it's all part of the IT family, so they all know the age of the, um, the products that we have and the software, so it'll all be part of the, um, software updates and, um, virus protection, so, yeah, that's a much.
Just a quick thing about that, Leah'll probably talk about it, so right now her, like, our contracted service, they go through each department head, and they go through and each one, try to figure out the ages and when they need it, and they get us, they have a whole running list of what years and stuff like that, so. Now we are including every department in there, in this analysis for IT budget.
So we should have a better handle on.
They gotta.
Where everybody stands.
Uh, Leah took that over, and has done an amazing job on it, so.
Great. Anything else for Diane? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, Sonia Riker, it's planning.
Hers, uh, it's gonna be kinda part of the building city hall, we just kinda threw hers in there, it's gonna be just one item in there, is the pagoda engineering, so.
Yep, just one relatively small request, coming from the landmarks commission, they requested ten thousand dollars for design and engineering to address the Spring Haven Pagoda, which is located in Stonebridge Park, and it was handmade in, I think, about eighteen ninety, it's one of our landmark properties identified as something worth protecting or preserving. Um, this has been a project that the landmarks commission has been working on for a long time, there are notes, of course, going back in the file like twenty years, wanting to work on this project, and the commission is finally putting some serious energy into it. The commission drafted a, um, an historic preservation plan to help identify and communicate why they think that it's a significant structure that we should put some money into, and we've been working with various professionals at low cost to understand how to fix it, um, the route that we're going for right now is to replace the concrete roof, and we did ask for some bids from concrete companies on that, and they were just really sporadic and lacked a lot of detail, I think one of them that we got back was seventy-two thousand dollars, which is way more than someone had estimated for us, and then I think we'd wanna spend on that. So, um, this ten thousand dollars is needed in order to hone in on, um, exactly what we need from those professional concrete companies, and, and how we can, um, get more accurate quotes.
Any questions? Then you go home and plan for your weekend, Leah.
Yes.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, community media, Will Newell.
If you want, stay on page twenty-seven, it's gonna be on page twenty-seven and one twenty-one, this is gonna be a little confusing in the books, I just wanted, let you know. So basically, what we'll kinda talk about, we, the media commissions, they, they proposed like five or six things, and we eliminated those, 'cause we wanted to update this room. And so there's gonna be two items in the building city hall budget, called the medium room, tables and chairs, media room upgrades. So basically, these, I have them in there, I probably should've moved them to the other budget, is what the city is gonna borrow for, budget, what they're paying for, and then the other one is what the, the other one under his media is what, we're using franchise fees to pay for it, so, is what they're paying for. Hopefully this all makes sense, that I said that, but, Al, what?
Yeah, I've asked Will and, and Ryan to work on this, because what I'd like to see is us get more use out of this room, and these tables, they're nice, heavy-duty tables, but in terms of being able to have other committee meetings here and things like that, they're really difficult to move, and the space just isn't very flexible, so I thought if we could come up with a plan, so that other people can use the room besides just us in court, 'cause it's an awful lot of space sitting here, unused a lot of the time, and, so that's what their proposal is gonna take care of, we hope.
Yeah, along with possibly some insurance issues with that portion right there.
So if you just wanna start on page one twenty-two, it says fiscal, or description, one twenty is the, um, gee, there's the, what's in there?
So, um, what, what we're gonna plan to do is, um, and Ryan'll talk about it, but I'll just briefly touch on it, is reconfigure the room and get rid of the tables and chairs here, so that we can, um, fold them up, move them out, and ev- and essentially make this a free space here, for the library to utilize, um, as they wish. But what we need to do, as you know, is get rid of all of this down here, all these cords that are being hidden by a very nice placed carpet. So, uh, that takes a little, a little doing, 'cause it takes some new equipment, uh, to rerun, uh, wiring. So, uh, the mayor had propos- the mayor and city administrator proposed to get, uh, also the screens to be viewed, uh, a little better, as you know, they're small, and possibly could be argued not necessarily placed the best. So, what, what we discussed was putting them back the way they were, having one projector this way, onto that wall, and one projector that way, back on that wall. And in that discussion, I said, if we do that, and we wanna clear this room, we need to get rid of these cables, even if we try to hide them, we still need to get rid of them, 'cause the room won't be utilized, so we should upgrade the equipment while we're at it, it just makes sense. If we're gonna get new equipment, we, we should just do it all at once, I know it's something we've thought about for a while, uh, and it, it just made sense to do it all at once. So, um, what community media will be taking on is getting rid of this cabling down here, and rewiring the cameras, new cameras, and new broadcast, uh, equipment, both on the screens and out to our YouTube and television channels, which is basically, uh, a complete gut, I guess, if you will, get rid of all the old equipment that was purchased, uh, I think the oldest piece of gear we have in there is nineteen ninety-nine or ninety-eight, and the newest is two thousand and two, uh, so it's, it's fairly old gear, uh, it'll be high definition, which, I don't know how much that matters to anyone, but the one thing it will benefit for, as far as high definition, is what we're seeing today with the graphics. They're not extremely crisp, and if we have, uh, more of a high-definition projection, the graphics will be better to view, so when Mark pulls up small print on Excel sheets and stuff, you'll be able to view those far better on these bigger projectors with better quality equipment, so that's, that, that's a big one. It will require, uh, IT to come in and rewire the connection cable to the telephone, so that it can go from a wall or somewhere that doesn't go across the wall. We will get two wireless microphones here, so that there will not be these cables running across, and we will, there's some other cabling, as you can see, uh, Mark is plugged in as such right now, running across, we will keep that, however, we'll be able to run it underneath the tables, and, and we'll, we'll basically put some time into running it nicely, so that we can hide it when we need to, store it away, pull it out when we need to. Uh, otherwise, there's a lot of wasted cables that we don't even use down there, that we just currently have hidden, 'cause we weren't sure what to do with them, now we know we're gonna get rid of them. So, if we go through the costs, um, if that's how you want me to do it, just.
You want the yours?
Uh, the one that committee proposed?
Yeah. No, the one that's.
The one that's in the budget?
Yeah, 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 just, just my portion, correct. So what that would entail is, um, a new video switcher, which, let me get to my right, uh, bad sheet, so the, um, switcher's twenty-five hundred, that would run control all these projectors, all the cameras, and how we would obviously control the entire room through the, the video switcher. The, uh, remote control cameras, there'd be three of them, we'd just replace them, which where they are now, better, high-quality, so when we zoom into your pretty face, they will, uh, the audience will see a much better picture of you. The video recorder, right currently right now, we record on DVDs, and then we take the DVD, and we take the information off the DVD, onto our computer, and then import that into our server. Uh, what we'll do now is just simply record onto digital files, that will be, again, higher quality, and then we won't have to do this, burn onto a DVD, take back off the DVD, and then get onto a computer, it'll all happen more seamlessly. Um, the computer converter is simply because the way a VGA cable works, it doesn't really display well, um, with the video switcher, it has to, you have to, um, change the frame rate to make it think it's a television, essentially is what we're doing there. Um, new cabling in brackets, we'll obviously need to go back into where we were with those holes you see in the ceiling for the brackets, for the projectors, as well as some, some new cabling for the, for the projectors. We will, uh, need a television to monitor the cameras and everything, because, again, the current televisions we have now are old technology, old standard definition, and now everything will be high definition, so it's a different connection. And we need a video signal converter, we need a couple of them for the projectors, again, because they'll be going from a, uh, I wanna say a, it's called a BNC cable, SDI HD cable that needs to get converted to an HDMI input, excuse, vice versa, HDMI out of the projector into a SDI input into the video switcher, so you need to convert it. Uh, if we wanted to buy a projector that had already, uh, installed, uh, video signal, those are like ten thousand dollars, so, uh, it's not really within our budget. Um, the, the projectors then, uh, that are part of this, uh, proposal here, would be, uh, again, on the.
Page thirty-four.
Thirty-four?
Well, what he was just talking about is paid by franchise fees.
Thank you.
And then what he's gonna talk about now is, they said, they said, well, 'cause they don't have that franchise fees, and it's, some cities should be paying for it too, so this is paid by city.
Right, so, so a reason why this hasn't happened, you know, two or three years ago, is because, uh, similar proposals by companies to come in and, and do what we're going to do, uh, is forty, fifty thousand dollars to redo this room and, and get it to a position where it is, again, kind of remote-controlled by an iPad, and we won't be able to do that, this will be far more manual, but, um, we don't, the community media budget literally only has about eighteen thousand dollars to spend each year now, until we dip into our savings account. So whatever we do, we only have about eighteen thousand, so, um, we simply didn't have enough to do a project of this scale, and the city needed to contribute. So, um, that's why, um, the mayor and administrator had, uh, knew that they needed to pitch in to make this happen, so with the two projectors, and the, uh, two screens to go on the walls would be within the city, uh, funds, as well as the two wireless microphones, and, uh, that helps make it happen within the, the budget that we have. Uh, this equipment is good equipment, it's equipment we use at the high school, it's equipment we use to broadcast the football games and basketball games, to broadcast at the announcements. at the high school. We did, I think we did a committee of the whole meeting last year in the large conference room with that equipment. So I call it more of a prosumer-grade equipment, is what we usually get. It's above consumer, probably close to professional gear, but maybe just a notch below, because we just don't have budgets to get all professional gear, broadcast gear. It's pretty standard gear to what community television, community media organizations purchase, as it's, it's sustainable, it has good customer service, and, and it's, it's not going anywhere, it's been around a while, it's called black magic, you can look it up, and it's, it's really good gear. In fact, Madison Media Institute uses this same gear. So, so I'm confident it'll work, but it's not like we have it now. If you've noticed, you can, with the current system, go up to the iPad and press it and make things turn on, you're used to it, now it's kinda falling apart. That's, if you wanna do that and bring a vendor in, that's where it gets to like seventy thousand. So this is kind of a manual upgrade, where everything would have to be done with the community media staff. So even though you could use this room for meetings, I do wanna just let everyone know you'd probably have to call me, or we'd have to bring a student down to set things up for you. It would take a couple minutes, and perhaps we could do a little cheat sheet that you, that, you know, once we get it all set up, we might find that it might be step one, two, three, four, five, and you're fine. We'll, we maybe won't know that until we get everything set up. But just so that's kind of a caveat, that it's good equipment, but it, we won't, you know, as it is now, we won't be able to just have you walk in and just use it whenever you want to.
And that's only if you need the equipment for your meeting?
Correct, correct, only if you need to. And like I say, it's pretty simple, and we might be able to find a way to make it even more simple.
Okay. All right, and did you have any, I guess we're just gonna talk about the media room stuff right now, did you have anything else for...
You know, I, the only thing that I, I guess, what's concerned to me that I had brought up to Alder Kerr was that, that's all of our money we're using, basically, was just for this room. So if a computer has a problem, a camera has a problem, a microphone has a problem, any equipment next year breaks or needs repair or replacement or updates, how do we, how do we handle that? So that is something that I wanted to hopefully have a little bit of contingency fund in case something were to happen.
There's been, I don't know if I can speak for you, Jennifer, if that's okay?
And I'd like to, Fourth Amendment for that contingency fund for community media. Will and I talked, I think three thousand is reasonable, kind of just as a safeguard if we've got some equipment that ends up failing, that kinda would, would ensure that we'd be able to keep operating, and that will allow us, that number will allow us not to dip into our fund balance, so.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
I'm gonna tap that log you up here. I'll let Ryan talk about the other portion of the media, which is on page 33, which is the room, tables for the room. So that's again paid by the channel, kind of overseeing by the library. It's all the community.
Yes, so we'll discuss the technology component, and with this room, we have the technology and then the furniture. So my portion was dealing with the furniture. We have these tables here, which are essentially a byproduct of the original intention of this room, being a distance learning room. Wonderful tables, they weigh about, I don't know, 105 pounds each, they're just giant and a mess to move. As the mayor mentioned, you know, one of the goals is to be able to utilize this room for the library and also the community, so this would be an additional room that we could rent out or use for library programs. While we have wonderful spaces already for people to do, well, either to rent out for their own meetings or for the library to do a program, we don't have what I would say is a traditional, like, empty room. The closest to that is the forum room, which has a stage, it has the stadium seating, you can, it's kinda difficult to utilize. What I, what my goal was with this furniture was to replace the tables, and they're the kind that swing down, so then you can store them easily, and then the chairs, which nest, so instead of stacking, it's the one where like the seat flips up, and think of like a shopping cart, they kind of slide into one another. The, the goal there being they'll, they'll roll, and you can kind of, if you think, again, using the shopping cart analogy, where they can just kinda like ride that train and move it, so we can either push the chairs along the side of the room or even in a different room easily, and especially for like accessibility purposes, it's easier to do that. And so we can have the tables set up. We want the tables here for, of course, city council meetings, court, the book sale, that's, that's also a big thing, they would be utilized for that, and they're strong enough to hold, you know, the hundreds of books that'll rest on them. But then, when, you know, when you are not here, when court is not in session, this room does have a tendency to just kinda sit here. We do utilize it for some kind of emergency use, not emergency in terms of like tornado warning, but just we don't have a room available, this is the next best thing. But now, if, you know, if this is passed, we can kind of push the tables and chairs to the side with the wires gone, that will, that liability will go away. This, for now, will remain, but maybe we could possibly push it back a little bit if needed. But it, really, I don't think it, if you look, this is actually quite a large room, so if this could all go away, this would be an empty space that both either the library or the community could use.
Any questions? Alder home question?
Sue, last thing, gave me a question, you had me up until the last part. So you're, you're suggesting all the tables and chairs are gone?
Out there.
But these tables remain?
Correct.
For now, because we need to leave something for the council.
Yeah, so these tables are a mess, so for planning, commission, and variety of other things, the way they are angled and positioned in here, and the printer, and the printer table, so from the various meetings, I would encourage us, if we're gonna, if we're really gonna be looking at the use of the room for a multipurpose room, that gets set up and tore down in ways that can be used in different ways, I would encourage us to also consider...
To do these.
To do these, or you're gonna have the same, same issue.
Okay.
We certainly could. I had suggested keeping these just as a cost-saving measure.
Well, and one, I will add one thing, and I totally agree, and maybe that's a phase, I always thought of it hopefully a phase two or three, however you wanna look at it, because currently you can see the wires for the microphones come in by the administrator there, and then they kinda go out from there. So right now, we're in a position where either way, you're having to deal with all the microphones, even if you were to pack all these tables away, you'd still have to pack the microphones away. The way around that, again, is to get more wireless mics. They are far more expensive than, of course, a wired mic, but I think you're absolutely right, and that's one thing we did look at, is, is it possible to redesign the room a little bit, or how do we look at it so we can get rid of everything? And I, I, I see the microphones as probably one of the biggest hurdles, because, just 'cause of price, a thousand bucks a piece at 11 microphones.
Yeah. All right. Okay, anyone else? Alder Kinsler?
Wanted to ask a very simple question. So there's been problems with going through the cable channels, so all these updates, does that mean there's no, no drop-offs?
Well, actually, so, in the operation budget, we're gonna add to actually get a cable feed in that room, so that we can monitor what's going on with the cable, so we know whether or not we are on cable or are not on cable, because right now, we have no way of monitoring what's going on in cable.
Gotcha.
Unfortunately. So we're gonna add that to the operation budget with the TV, and that should help know whether or not we're on, YouTube, we can go online easy and check it, but...
But even if you know, do we have the equipment to make sure that we're consistently on, I guess, is the point of that question?
Yes. Again, yes, we do have the equipment that we're consistently on. Sometimes with, I will say, with doing everything over the internet or over IT and network, we do run into sometimes some issues where there's a firmware update that needed to be updated, and we didn't see it until they, you know, the crew came in that night and we never updated it, and now it doesn't jive with the other portion that it needs to. So those type of mistakes are happening. We're also seeing some network issues that we believe to be at the high school, where if there is a lot of activity at the high school, and we're sending everything back to the high school, to our head end, and we have a bunch of students and parents at a football game, or usually it's like a basketball game or something during a weeknight, and they're, they're sucking up the bandwidth at, at the high school and using all that up, all of a sudden our stream lags a little bit, which is really what sends to the channel, because we basically send to a converter box that converts for YouTube, and then goes to another converter box that goes to the television. So that, so all these conversions can, can screw things up too. And so we're seeing some of the lag being with going over the internet, though we do find that to be the best, as we know, the cable technology is slowly fading. And as we'll talk in the operation budget a little bit, our revenue from cable is also fading a little bit. So we really wanna make a strong presence with our online activity, hence why we're trying to move towards online, but there's obviously challenges there as well.
Thanks.
Anything else?
I just, to point out what I just said about the franchise fees, and how we're seeing a steady decline in our franchise fees. The way people are watching media now, they're not subscribing to cable, they're streaming, they're streaming their Netflix, they're streaming whatever, and so the revenue we're getting from reporting fees, or franchise fees, is dropping significantly, so I strongly encourage us doing what we wanna do now with those funds, because the longer we wait, the less we'll have to work with.
I had a quick question about that, because in the summary page, it actually shows it increasing in 2021 and 22, 22, and I was wondering why the cable TV revenues?
Isn't part of the, the river front?
Yeah, that was...
Oh, with new customers, oh, okay.
The anticipation that they're not going to...
You're talking about your actual capital budget?
No, the, well, in the capital budget, it has the revenues and the summary for the TV revenues.
Yeah, it's just when they budget, that's what they're budgeting for, doesn't, that's actually doesn't show an increase.
Yeah.
That's what they think they need in the next five years, so like, what do you, revenues are going down, these numbers, the revenue's going down, these numbers are this, it could cut into their fund balance, so there will be some issues, challenges. Because revenue's not going, right now, there's like $8,000, I believe, AT&amp;T, is that correct, U-verse?
Yeah, we're seeing trending at about $9,000 less a year this year.
Yeah, so it's losing $9,000 annually, I assume. Charter has made a study, charter hasn't fallen off its business.
AT&amp;T is dropping their cable.
Right.
So some people are dropping that.
And essentially, essentially in three to five years, AT&amp;T, U-verse will be gone, so we won't even have that revenue.
Anything else, Chad?
Well, I just wanna mention, since we're talking about it, I mean, perhaps we could start a radio station, and that might be a way to generate some revenue.
Good idea.
Okay, I think that's it. Thank you, Will, and Ryan, I assume you're gonna go on to talk about the library?
There's 104.
Yeah. So for the library, the first project is the HVAC replacement in the building, and this is, this would be a full HVAC replacement. We've had some issues for a few years now, and the cost to service those kinda keeps going up, or at least, at the very least, remains consistent, and we are anticipating that to just continue with this aging system. The building is unique in the fact that we have the original building and then the addition, and we have these rooftop units that try to kinda work together. We've had issues in terms of climate control in the building, especially in staffing areas. The winter, it's freezing, I can definitely relate to that when I started. The summer gets a little warm, and also the energy efficiency is not efficient. So this would help improve those conditions. We, this, this quote is based on a quote from Illingworth Kilgus, who we currently have a service contract with. They came, and we also have a second one with Commercial Air, but however, we have not received that yet, we should be receiving that very shortly.
Oh.
Well, if, I don't know, to be honest.
Just so you know, that number, 370, I don't know if you mentioned it, budget was higher than that when we came to the, from the committee. We did take out the boiler, if you wanna explain, I think we believe the boiler was four or five years old.
Well, yeah, I think like six, six, six to seven years old, I believe, is, is, we, the library got a new boiler. So when we asked them to, you know, get the cost estimate to do a complete HVAC, they included the boiler, because that would, that would be there, however, that's not necessary, so we reduced that amount to, to reach the one that we're asking for now. And Brad, did you wanna add anything with the second quotes?
So we got an updated quote today, of course, perfect timing. The updated quote from Commercial Air, their opinion was, as you said, that the boiler, which is in the quote from Kilgus that we originally got, they said to replace it, or it was just part of their all-inclusive package to revamp this entire system in this facility.
The new bit is?
That was from Kilgus, that's the old bit.
Oh, right, right.
The one from Commercial Air, they came in and they did a kind of a face-value approach to it, they said, okay, what are your problems? We described everything, they inspected the system, and their conclusion was that to effectively solve the immediate issues in this facility, that the air handlers were also not necessarily needing to be replaced at this immediate point in time, which cuts the cost significantly for the repair, repairs to this facility. And their total, all said and done, includes replacing every single rooftop unit, which is comparable to what Kilgus proposed, and there's five of them. They proposed doing a balancing service after, which is around another $5,000, so the rooftop units were about $95,000 in the quote. The balancing service is about $5,000. They also highly suggested that the controls be repaired. Those are about $56,000, and that includes training of staff, and the controls and the rooftop units are highly compatible, and they're designed to work together, and the controls are extremely intuitive, so staff, it doesn't take as much time to train staff on it, it's, it's, when you get into it, it's very self-explanatory, you can operate within it really a lot easier than the current system that we have here at this facility, which is very outdated for the system. And so that's $56,000, and with a 7% contingency, it comes around to about $167,000. And then again, this does not include the air handler, it does not include ductwork, additional ductwork, it doesn't include damper systems, so actually getting up into the ductwork, adding dampers here, taking away dampers where they're not needed, and does not include the boiler system. They also suggested that we could have a professional service come in and take a much closer look at the boiler system that we have, and see if the boiler, the newer boiler itself, is having issues more due to the components that go along with it than the actual boiler unit itself. They said that the boiler unit, being seven years old, should not be having the issues that it is. It's a extremely high, highly recommended boiler. It should have anywhere between 25 and 40-year lifespan, and the telltale sign to see things happening to the heating system in this building, it, it's probably not the boiler itself, it's most likely some components that go along with it. So there might be issues within the system, but not necessarily the boiler. So the Kilgus quote, including that, seems as though it may or may not make sense to replace that at this point in time. So that's, that's the information that I have.
Replace what?
The boiler itself.
Oh, right, but it doesn't make sense, most likely.
Most likely, yeah.
Right.
Most likely, it's not the boiler, it's just components of the heating system.
Right, right. So I, we've had all these issues with, I think you see here, since 2012, we spent almost $62,000 repairing the heating system in here, and that's in addition to the service charge, service fees every year. So I had asked Ryan to see what it would cost to make this functional, you know, it just seems silly to keep pouring money into it, and I know we've sat here in meetings where it's been about 50 degrees in the middle of February, it's not real comfortable. So we've still been trying to refine this pricing, I think, and I think maybe we can talk about this a little more in the next week or two before we come to actually, you know, having a vote on this and getting a little more, firming up these numbers a little bit would be a good idea. bit would be a good idea. So that's, that's my two cents. Any questions?
I have one quick question. You said that the quote, the 167 quote, didn't include ducts or dampers. Is that because we don't need them, or is that because they didn't include them?
Well, they didn't include them because if you don't replace the air handling unit, then the ducts and dampers coming from that air handling unit, you wouldn't want to necessarily touch them because they kind of go hand in hand. To do a professional balancing service inspection after, we would potentially install new AC units on the rooftop and do the new controls for the whole system itself, that, that service will point out all the deficiencies in terms of airflow and give a much more detailed and scientific look at the system as a whole. And then based on that, you can design a much, much better project to replace where you're actually having these issues, or why you're having these issues. As opposed to just saying, okay, the whole system, just let's wipe it clean and repair the entire thing.
So they're recommending these steps and then looking at the air handlers, the dampers and things possibly later, is that what we're talking about?
That's correct, yeah.
But we don't know if they really need replacing or not. At this point, they don't think they do.
At this point, they're, they're recommending that we, we would do the things that need immediate replacement and then look a little bit closer at the rest of the system to see whether or not it actually needs to be replaced. Or maybe it's just some components of the rest of that system that needs to be replaced.
But they think what they're recommending right now will make this functional for...
Years.
Yeah.
Several years, hopefully.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Well, so we have reduced the number based on the original quote to take out the boiler. Was that actually a number, or did we guess what the boiler was?
No, they had the boiler at 67,000.
Okay.
And the boiler was actually replaced with some money that, if you remember, Pat Marsh got back in 2010, some of the Obama money for energy improvements, he got a grant, and it was replaced with some of that money, I think.
Okay.
So any other questions? Andy?
I guess my only statement is, I want to make sure we do our homework before we accept the 167, because I would hate for a year from now, we do this balancing, and then we figure out, well, it's another 170,000, and we could have just done it all at once. So, I mean, that's my only statement.
The, the feedback, I asked that question, and the feedback I got was that to do an air handler after the fact would not cost any different tomorrow as it would today. So if it was in fact deficient in some sort of a way, to go back in the next year and do it at that point in time, or two years or three years down the road, it wouldn't cost much more at that point in time as it would today. Basically, construction costs, inflation would be the only thing that would be the difference.
Okay. Anything else? All right, thank you. And Ryan, did you have anything else?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The second project is the vestibule and entry. This is, I guess you could say, a continuation from last year's project. Last year, we had, I think, a little over $40,000 to do two vestibules, however, that didn't include a design. So the, with that 40,000, not all of it, we, we actually had some design work done and priced it out that to do two vestibules would be over $200,000. And looking at this entrance right over here, that was never designed to be really a library entrance. I mean, you can enter it, but if anyone is not familiar with this library and they enter it, they don't know where they're going to go. However, it is incredibly inefficient in terms of energy. So what this proposal is saying is to redo that as just as new glazing, new storefront, if you want to, if you want to call it that. And then upstairs, off of Schluter Road, in the children's area, we would like to make that into a vestibule, both for energy efficiency, but also a safety component. We have already had, since the, those doors were open to the public, I think, a little over a year now, it used to be just a staff entrance. However, it, it's a fantastic entrance for the public to use, we get a lot of people coming through there. But we also have had a few kids go out. And so the only barrier between the building and the street is one set of doors. So we feel that extra set of doors in terms of security would be ideal. And not to mention, it is not exactly an ADA welcoming entrance, so the vestibule would also look to remedy that.
And this is going to take some money. Mark, could you explain that?
So basically, it's 120,000. So it says other revenue, which is 60,000. So basically, that's money kind of left over from the project that we haven't spent this year, and the savings we're going to have on the library parking lot. So basically, it's fund balance, but we just applied it to this project from these projects from 2017, we wanted to show that. So the real amount extra is 60,000. So we need additional money.
Okay. Any questions, Brian?
A few. So one to Mark's point there. So any savings from the parking lot wouldn't necessarily go into the fund balance for the library, correct? Wouldn't it just reduce on...
It would just reduce, I'm just using it as, I know the project's savings, that's why I use it to this point. Could be used, reduced from anywhere else.
I only say that because I know police have before indicated, well, we didn't get this car, we returned this car. You know, that's been used as a reason to give...
Yeah.
In a positive, I'm not saying that was negative. It's been used as an example before.
Yes.
And I, I don't, I don't want us to get in that habit of, well, I saved the money here, so I get to use it somewhere else. The question, another question I had was the upstairs entry. Can, can someone remind us of why we turned off that entry in the sense of not using it, and why we're going back to using it?
I can explain that.
Please.
That used to be the main entry to the library before we did the addition. And there was a little narrow door down here in the parking lot back here, and we had a bigger parking lot upstairs also. So when we did the addition, this became the main entry, and we just closed that off and only staff used it. But then, when they did the remodel of the staircase a few years ago, and they were using, had to use that entry because it was the only way people could get in, I think they had a lot of positive comments from the public about being able to go in that way. So they decided to start using that again. And actually, it's, I'm sure it's working out really well right now with this parking lot project, too. But that's why it was, the staff was using it all the time ever since the building addition, but now the public has been using it. Because a lot of people walk over in the neighborhood rather than coming all the way down and around, and that kind of thing, I think.
And, and I say that because that was some of the reasons why we said we had to do the parking lot, was access and that we weren't, can have people coming up through the top. So I'm struggling with wanting to now add, add up there because we were saying that people don't want to come to the library because they won't go up the steep hill in the parking lot, and we don't have a way for them to enter upstairs.
I don't think that was ever the argument. More safety was the biggest argument for that, insurance-wise. You know, the insurance company said we had to, well, in some way, said we had to fix the parking lot. So, I mean, we wanted it to be a safe entry, certainly, but we never argued that we wanted to funnel everybody through here.
Well, that was one of the big reasons why we spent all the money for the staircase remodel.
That I don't really...
Well, the staircase remodel was done to make it a more welcoming place. I don't think it was so that we would never use the front entry. At the time that we voted for the staircase remodel, we weren't using the front entryway. So it's just another way of getting in. It's also extremely energy inefficient. That, when the, when we did the addition, we never did anything to that entrance, so the glass and everything is like from 1965, I think. It's not, I'm sure we're losing a ton of heat out of there, as with the one down here.
If I could just add to that, I think Ryan told me it's about 20% of the traffic is coming in that door now, is that right?
You know, if I, if I had to guess, I would say at least that, yeah. I mean, it's, it, I see, well, since my office is nearby, I know, I hear that door open constantly. A lot of it is families, of course, since it's entering the, the children's area, but it is also just regular patrons. I hear a lot about how our library is unique in the sense that we are such a, a great location for walkability. And so this, you're, you're getting both areas. Since we are kind of surrounded by the neighborhood, yes, I guess, you know, they could literally walk down to the main entrance, but this offers a, a nice welcoming entrance right up there. I, I, I'm sorry, I don't know the history of, with the parking lot and whatnot, that was, that was prior to me, but I, I do know that entrance is used often. If we closed that, I, I assume we would get quite a bit of feedback from the public on, why isn't this open now?
I think we're also going to have some issues since we lost several parking places with the new lot, so there are probably going to be more people parking up on top, I would think.
Yeah, there's, you know, just from living where I live, there's a fair amount of foot traffic that goes, goes in that, that entrance. But I mean, obviously, this, this entrance down here is the main, is intended to be the main entrance, and that was a lot of the, you know, one of the justifications for the stairway project was, you know, you would come in down here and then it wasn't really clear where to go to actually get to the library, and as well as to make it a more welcoming, and really, it's a, you know, gorgeous staircase. But, you know, opening that one wasn't intended to replace this entrance as the main entrance. But it is a lot more expensive than we had previously, you know, been told, so...
Right, I think those initial numbers were, they must have just been for the design and not, and a very little bit of the construction is all I can think.
Yeah, well...
We miss that much. Yeah, well, that's somehow we miss, because that, we never should have passed that the way it was. Anything else?
So how many quotes have we gotten on this?
How many quotes?
Yeah, is this like, is this, sorry.
Well...
This is, this is from one quote from Arrow Eberly, for the, based on the design, design proposal.
Right. Then we'll go out for bids. For any of these things, we go out for bid after we, once the design is done. So sometimes the bids can be quite a bit cheaper. This is just what they think it will cost, correct?
Correct, yeah. I misspoke just then, it's not necessarily a, a bid, it's just a cost estimate.
Yeah. Anything else? Is that it, Ryan? I think?
Pretty sure.
That's enough. First budget down. Okay, next up is information technology. Leah.
So Leah's on page 24. And the breakout of all her stuff is on page 25.
So as Mark said before, we do not have an IT professional on staff for the city. We contract with, with a group called Land Tech, and they are in our offices every Wednesday. And then whenever we have an emergency or we need them for a special project, or they just have more work than they can get done on Wednesday. So Sarah and I then act as sort of the staff wranglers, I guess, of IT. People who have IT needs come through us, and then we communicate those, you know, on a priority sort of list with our IT consultants every week. So that's, that's how we handle IT. And then once a year, I sit down with every department head in the city, and we discuss what their IT needs are, what their wants and needs are. And then I put together a budget with Land Tech, and Sarah does the same for the police department. So what you see here on page 25, basically, is just a summary of what our IT needs are for 2018. So we have, you know, rough, a little over $16,000 in new computers, another $15,000 for servers, and then a couple of special projects. So we do have a computer replacement schedule that we put together with Land Tech. So we have every computer in the city and every computer user in the city detailed on this schedule, and then we assign users a rating based on what kind of computer user they are. Sarah's a super high-need user, she has a lot of computer programs, and, you know, she would be dead in the water without her computer. We have other users who really never need to get a new computer, they can always have sort of a hand-me-down computer or refurbished computer from somebody else. So it's kind of, for that reason, it's kind of important that we stay on our replacement schedule because, you know, if Sarah's up for a new computer next year and we don't replace her computer, then maybe the guy that's three computers down on the replacement, you know, on the refurbished lines, computer goes, and then we don't have a computer for that person. So that's why we put together the schedule, and I think it's working pretty well, and it does also help us so that we don't have years where we're buying, you know, $50,000 worth of computers because we're going to buy, and we can sort of stay on that schedule and then try and keep our IT budget stable from year to year. So we do have to replace our backup server next year, that's a big cost item, it's $10,000. I believe that backup server's currently eight years old, though. So we have most of our servers at City Hall, and our backup server is here at the library. That is sort of, I think, one of the biggest ticket items on this budget. The other big ticket item that we have is we need to replace the video recorder for the security cameras here at the library. That, I don't think, has been replaced since this building was remodeled, so it's pretty old. That's a $7,000 ticket item to replace that. And then I did put in a special project for our pool house. Our pool house does not have a data connection to our computer network, it never has, which means now that we have an IP-based phone system, the phone at the pool is not connected to the city server. So if we have someone, for instance, who calls down to the pool and they, you know, want to schedule a birthday party or something, we can't transfer them up to the park and rec office. We have to say, sorry, can you hang up and call this number? So it's not, not a huge deal, obviously, the pool's not open all year, but customer service-wise and just staff-wise, it would be, I think, a big advantage to be able to have them on the same phone system. Plus, Jake and Missy, or if they're down at the pool house, they want to do some work down there, if it's really busy, they want to be down there, but they still need to get work done, they can't connect to our network when they're down there. So that project would run a UV rated data line to the house, to the pool house so that they can be on the network, and then we would purchase a couple of phones that would be in our, on our phone network down there. We also have a lot of cameras in the city, security cameras, but we don't have any camera in the pool house at the admission counter, and we don't have any camera out on the pool deck. So Jake expressed a want to have some security cameras installed there as well.
Any questions? Chad and Brian?
You referred to the schedule that helps you plan for this. Is that new this year, or have we had that for a little while?
Put that together last year with Land Tech.
Okay, so this is the second year?
Yep.
Okay, great, that's great.
And I'm happy to email any of you a copy if you want to see that, but...
My question had to do with the phone line that's down at the pool. So if we remove that, I know phone lines for us are fairly expensive. Will we be able to eliminate the phone line that's down there, or will that still need, be needed for other purposes?
I don't think it'll be needed for any other purposes, I think we can eliminate it. It's just a, a separate hard line that goes into the pool just for the phone, so...
Do we need it for fire?
Um, I don't think so.
He's given us a nod, no.
I don't think so. I mean, 911 would just dial through the phone, so...
I mean, I know a lot of our shelters, we're having to pay for dedicated lines, shelters for monitoring.
Oh, for like a fire alarm system?
I don't think there's a fire alarm system down there.
I don't think we have one there. Yeah.
Andy?
There's a, and maybe it's just the re-appropriating for budgeting, so the cameras for the pool deck aren't, why are they not in the pool's budget and they're in this one? I know they're IT, so...
I know, that's kind of a good question, Andrew. We kind of, you know, I think IT, because we don't have an IT professional on staff, I think that budget is sort of, sometimes people put things in their own personal budget. Sarah, for instance, puts most of the dispatch equipment in her dispatch budget because it's so specialized. I think we kind of try with things like computers and cameras, if we can keep them in one budget and do like a mass purchase of things, it makes it obviously more cost-effective, but easier to keep track of for both ourselves and the IT consultants what's actually done. So I guess it could be in Jake's budget, if you'd rather put it in Jake's budget.
I, it doesn't matter to me. I'm just wondering, because I know parks, sometimes we say, well, this shelter should have a camera.
Yeah, yeah.
It's good to know this.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Fred.
I believe that way it works, if Jake really wanted one, for a concern, he would put it in his own budget. These are mostly through like IT and Land Tech, or, and they kind of... These are mostly through like IT and Land Tech, and they kind of go through and see what's needed.
They recommend.
So Jake probably, Jake is not really involved in that.
Gotcha.
I mean, he's involved, but it's not his area of expertise.
Doug?
Well, I think it does make it easier to keep track of how much we're spending on some of these items, too, whereas, you know, with other items, like especially with operating and line items, they get spread out over the budget, and then trying to figure out how much we're spending on those. I just wanted to verify again, something I brought up earlier, so the senior center is, their computers are on your spreadsheet now?
Yep, yep, their computers are on our spreadsheet. Diane's projector that she needed this year is on this, this spreadsheet, we have $1,000 budgeted for a projector and Bluetooth speaker for her, and then she had another computer need for an intern there, which we were actually able to give her intern a refurbished laptop this year, so that needs been taken care of.
And so that's, that's on, that refurbished one is now on the list?
Yes.
As well, because there was a period where the computer that, that that one replaced, that was used for presentations and stuff, really didn't work very well, was unreliable, and it needed to be replaced, and I don't know if she didn't ask for it, or one wasn't available, but so.
Oh, okay.
Glad to hear, it sounds like that, that's been resolved.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Leah. Yeah, next up is law enforcement.
So page 35, we'll do law enforcement first. Yeah, she has two budgets, dispatch and law enforcement.
I'm going to talk about the emergency communications budget.
You better put the microphone in front of her, or, or.
Will will come out of it, it would work.
Will be back here in a few minutes.
Okay, so largest item that you'll see on here is dispatch consoles, $37,000. Many of you came through when we did a tour, if not, I know you've been in the dispatch center before, and you've seen the equipment that we have in there. While it is definitely a step above what we had prior to that, it is probably nearing its end of life. We did get that used from Middleton Police Department when they were replacing their equipment or consoles at that time. So they were probably anywhere from five to 10 years old when we got them, and we've had them probably for about five or six years now as well. I know we, I think we showed some of you that some of the controls were cracked and broken and weren't working properly. Sometimes you can get it to go down using the down button, sometimes it doesn't, sometimes you have to push two buttons, sometimes you push the one, it'll go down. So the main dispatch workstation is not reliable there, and it's very difficult, if not impossible, to get parts for that because of the age of it now. In addition to that, you know, the room is kind of an L shape, so we took what we could get. We actually flipped over a counter when we got that, it was upside down, because it didn't fit in the room properly. So we kind of made it fit. However, with that being said, it's not ADA compliant, we're supposed to have a 36-inch walkway between, and we do not have that. So if we had an employee who had a need to use a wheelchair, or hired somebody with a disability that was in a wheelchair, we would not be compliant with that, and they would not be able to work in that area. So with that being said, we reached out to a couple different vendors, had some designs presented to us with different options for having the workstations kind of similar to how they are, but definitely with an ADA compliance. And the estimates that we got totaled right around $37,000 to include, we've got freight charges to get it here, as well as moving the computer equipment, the radio equipment, the phone equipment, all of that has to be moved out of the way, the old station's taken down, the new station's put in, and then all the equipment put back in as well. So that estimate includes all of that cost.
Are there any questions about, you know, that?
Okay, and.
Can we talk about that?
Yeah, you can talk about that, more cameras.
Okay, the next, the next item we're talking about is radio system maintenance, requesting $3,500, and that would be to go over some of the equipments we.
What page are we on?
I thought we were on, yeah.
Page 45.
Page 3,500. Dispatch consoles, 37, radio system maintenance, 3,500. No, excuse me.
Rampage, you get 51, page 51.
Okay, it appears the radio system maintenance was cut out of the budget.
I think we thought that was operating, didn't we?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we have to buy three new VHF antennas and, and do some other things, so maybe we could hopefully make an amendment or something like that, or talk about it later. Okay, the next item is the video system updates and monitors. This is similar to what you're talking about with Leah and the IT cameras. We would be, what we've tried to do is, we, I think we have over 30 cameras in the city right now, and we've, we've been replacing the analog ones with IP-based or HD, and HD cameras. So we, we have several other ones in City Hall that still need to be replaced, and we'd also like to add probably two more dispatch monitors. We had talked with April and others about possibly repurposing these monitors here, but we're unsure, you know, based on the age, if they would be compatible with what we have to do. So we're estimating at $4,500, and if there's any extra money, we would like to add, I know there was a request from Dan Stefani to add a couple more cameras over at the Public Works Garage.
Any questions about that? I think these monitors are not very old, what are they, like two or three years old, maybe? Pat put them in right before he left, anyway.
And I'll be here 13 years this month, and it seems like I was only going to be here for five years when I was hired. So time flies.
So in other words, if you were a monitor?
Yeah, that's it.
I'd probably be one of those big boxes.
I'm just thinking, they may be up to date, up enough, up to date that you could use them, I don't know, I'd check into it.
Okay. And the last thing for dispatch was, just as long as we're changing the furniture, give it a paint job, so we estimate it at $3,500.
Any questions? Nope. Okay, so now we're on to law enforcement.
Page 35, law enforcement.
It's our annual replacement of squad cars, would be the number one thing, and we're estimating that at $82,000. 13 years ago, a new squad car cost about $20,000, now, basically, the sticker price on these is right around over $34,000. And then with the changeover costs, we're having one changed over next week, that's going to be $4,500. We're now contracting with General Communications. In the past, we've had Dan Ekloff do those cars. And we're not, you know, Dan wasn't that much less, but the nice thing about Dan is, when he was in the city, if something broke, we just brought it over and he fixed it, and there's really no charge, so this is something different for us to go through. So that would be replacing two cars, one is a 2011 Crown Vic, and that's our, our K9 car, and the other one is a 2014 Ford Explorer. I stopped by the garage today and had, reviewed those two vehicles with our mechanic, Ron, and he was in agreement. I don't think I included score sheets, I did have score sheets with Mayor when we presented this, and both of them scored out at being, for 115, the Ford Explorer, it was qualified for replacement, and then 116, which is the K9 car, that one was graded out as needing immediate consideration, just based on the age and use of the vehicle. The next item is just replacing two squad video cameras. As we replace the cars, we try to upgrade the squad car video, even though we have body cameras, the squad car videos are really important, because the body camera, you have to touch the button and start it, and it's not going to get the entire picture of what you're seeing when you're driving down the street, whereas the squad camera, it activates as soon as they activate their emergency lights, it goes back 30 seconds, and there's also crash sensors on these that go back 30 seconds, so that if they're in an accident, it will activate the camera and actually backtrack and show you what happened before it happened. So these would be updated with two newer systems with HD video, which are considerably sharper than the video, such as when we had the, the incident on the Belt Line, that was not an HD camera, it was kind of blurry when we tried to show that to you, I think it was last April. The next item are two squad laptops and modems. Each time we replace the cars, we try to replace the laptop computers, and the modems, which have GPS antenna systems in them, they have the, they're AirLink modems that have the phone, the cell connection in there, that's built into it, so that's estimated at $12,320. And if, if, you know, right now, we're using Panasonic CF31s, if down the road, there's a more efficient model or a better model than that, then that would be the one that we would use. A lot of departments are now switching to almost like a tablet-type computer, but I've always been hesitant to do that, I'd rather just have them bolted into the car than have people take them out and, and have them possibly get damaged.
Does anyone have any questions about the squads? Or the equipment, Chad?
So what are the squad cars that we're buying?
The squad cars we'd be buying would be the Ford Explorer SUV.
Okay.
Police pursuit vehicle. That seems to be the standard, that's like the new Crown Vic.
Okay.
That's the, the, sort of the, the standard for police cars. And I know there was a lot of media hype about exhaust coming into the driver's area, carbon monoxide. We've actually added carbon monoxide detectors in all our cars earlier this year, and they've never, as far as I know, they've never activated. They were blaming Ford for a while, but now it's turning out that it was the installers, they were drilling holes and not properly sealing them, which was causing the carbon monoxide to leak into those vehicles.
Okay. And this is obviously the car that you prefer, I mean, are there a lot of, I know the Crown Vic is, I mean, I guess they're generally a dominant kind of make and model for a police squad car, but are there a lot of options, or are there other options out there?
There's not a whole lot of other options, we've had Dodge Chargers, we've had two of those in the last probably eight years, and they've just been a disaster with their engines, transmissions. Ford has come out with, I believe, a hybrid squad car, and they're using it in places like New York City and Los Angeles, but for being in Wisconsin, winter, the Belt Line, it's not really a safe option for the officers. For our sort of environment, I mean, we used to, when we had a snowstorm, we'd have to sometimes borrow pickup trucks from Public Works, it was really bad. With these Explorers, we haven't had to do that for several years, because we're able to get through the, through the winters safely.
Okay. Doug?
So Chief, I had lunch with Peter McKeever today, just so you're prepared.
Having a flashback, yeah.
When he was on the council, was always advocating for purchasing fewer rather than more vehicles, so. How many vehicles total do we have in the squad and the fleet?
I think right now, right now, we have 13, that's only because we have one extra one that's going to be, a new one that's being changed over, so once that goes into the shop Monday, we'll be back down to 12, 12 vehicles.
And that's 12 is the normal?
12 is our normal amount of cars.
So buying two per year keeps us on a six-year rotation, basically?
Approximately, it's, we rotate the marked squads probably every four years, and then the unmarked squads, those go anywhere from six, six to, well, probably eight, six to eight to 10 years, the administrative cars.
Right. Okay, but if you average it all out, it's, buying two a year replaces it.
Sure, it probably, average out, it probably comes out to every six years.
Okay, well, if it comes out, okay, if it's.
Well, the marked squads, four years, the unmarked squads, eight years.
Okay.
Anything else?
I think the simpler way is also the fleet is 12.
Right.
Okay, continue.
Okay, so we went through the cars.
Tasers.
Tasers.
Kurt, you're the taser guy.
We're looking at replacing two tasers next year, that's with a camera attached to them. It's a sensitive electronic device, they have a guaranteed five-year life with warranty, but after that, they're real hit and miss, depends how much water they're exposed to out in the rain. So again, we're in kind of a cycle to get two every year, just to keep the units going.
Questions?
And that cost is $5,600 for the taser and the camera, along with the warranties.
Speed trailer, the current speed trailer we have, we've had since 1999, it's been refurbished several times. It has a nice paint job on it, our mechanic repainted it a couple years ago, but still the guts of the actual trailer are from 1999. We've tried adding solar panels on it to try to keep it operational longer, but it's just, it's just not very efficient. We've put this proposal in for the last several years, and this is the first time we've made it this far with it. Thank you, Mayor. The newer one we're looking at would also have a message board that we could use for special events, such as the festival, Memorial Day Parade, things like that. It's very popular with the residents when, when we have speeding auto complaints, we can stick it out there and get people to be aware of what their speed is.
And this will be a solar?
All the newer ones, all the newer ones, you, you charge them up, and then you have a solar panel that kind of keeps them going for a couple extra days. It should be able to stay out there for at least a week, or with a solar panel that works, several weeks, but ours is probably three, four days, and that's about it.
I was thinking the message board in particular would be a nice thing to have, especially with all the construction down with the Riverfront Project and that kind of thing, and, and other events. Any questions?
Well, to tag on to what you just said, is it eligible for TIF funds, if it is being utilized that way? Or for hotel?
It would be eligible, because it's used for city-wise, not just for that area only. So, I think just for that area only, you can make an argument, like a fire truck, if you have to get a special truck because of the buildings going in there, then you can make the argument that some that's used throughout the city, it's not eligible.
But I think Brian, I think Brian started to say something about tourism, so can we use, say, part of it?
Tourism, probably.
At least, you know, some part of it goes towards, so we have to spend for that.
That'd be a good idea.
Yep.
Anything else?
One thing I should touch on, we did move the 911 equipment from 2018 to 2019. We just switched to the Tri-Tec CAD about a week ago, and we're monitoring to see how that works, it's sort of the same, following the same footsteps that Sun Prairie has followed. So going into 2019, we'll have three options, we could either have the county take all our 911 calls and transfer them to us, we could go out and buy our own 911 system to continue to have it, or we could possibly partner with another police agency, which we've made some inquiries about, too. So that would be in the 2019 budget.
Okay, any other questions for Molly? Thank you. I'd like to take like a five-minute break here, if that's okay.
Next will be the fire budget, fire EMS, so fire starts on page 42.
Yeah, if it's a full-size car, but it's.
Okay, I'll start out with the fire budget, the, this one is pretty much similar to other years, firefighter protective equipment, 12,000. The radio replacement, radio equipment, our radios that we carry, our portables, need to be replaced, they're getting to be almost 10 years old at this point, they were, the original ones were bought through a grant. The Knox box for car one and ladder five, should be ladder three, is a, those are the to actually lock the Knox box key that we have right in the truck.
Maybe you could explain what the Knox box is.
The Knox box is a key that, we require now anybody, any commercial establishment that pulls a building permit to put a Knox box on their building. The Knox box, it's basically a little safe, that we put their keys to the facility. The Knox box, it's basically a little safe that we put their keys to the facility in it. Fire department's the only one that has the key to open that little safe. This actually then locks the key into the truck, and then you have to have a four-digit code to open that key, to get that key out. Then that, that box is tracked, so I can tell who the last person was to take the key out of that particular vehicle. So hose and nozzle replacement, that's standard equipment that we end up replacing every so often. We test, we have to test our hose once a year, and just through the wear and tear, we have to replace it every so often. And the rescue mannequin is our training dummies that we use on our training nights to simulate either down firefighters or down individuals that need to be rescued. So when we went, when you came through for the facilities, walk-through, you get to see what the, our current ones look like. They're probably 20, 25 years old, so. Any questions on the fire budget?
Andrew?
Actually, how's the fire truck, the new fire truck that we passed last year? And then how's the new monitor and different things like that?
It's, it's good. We're, it's in service. It's, it didn't pump at the fire last Wednesday night, but it was in service down there. We are still adjusting things on it, moving it around. We will be putting it into the frontline pumper most likely on Friday morning. So it's active, it's all ready to go, and so it's a work in progress. We'll continue to move it forward and adjust things as we see they needed, need to be changed, so. Thanks.
Anything else? Anyone? No. Okay.
Page 48 is EMS.
EMS, the, only two pieces on EMS. One's the ambulance replacement, and then the equipment to go with the ambulance, the laryngoscopes, the suction, some of the more, what do I want to say? The equipment that we use are not on a regular basis, but it's, it needs to be replaced every five to 10 years, and we try to use what we can, like the suction unit. Suction units, if it's 10 years old, it's losing its power, just not as durable, so. The ambulance is, the current ambulance that we have, we put into service in February of 2013. We ordered it in 2012. It takes four to eight months to build it, and then it takes another month or so to get it in service, so.
Any questions?
Do we have a reserve ambulance now?
We do, yep. And the reserve ambulance right now, I believe, Doug, do you recall what, did we say it was a 2000?
2006 is what year.
Yes. So it's 12 years old, which, the replacement schedule on the ambulances are every, somewhere between four and six years, so.
Anyone else? Andrew?
What are all the things that the reserve ambulance is used for, might be helpful?
The reserve ambulance, the, the main reason that we have the reserve ambulance is if our primary breaks down, we've got a backup that we can then put into service immediately. If it needs, if the primary ambulance needs to be towed someplace, we can pull equipment off of it, get the crews back to the station, and we're only out of service that, just the time that it takes to get the crew from wherever it's broken down to the station. If we didn't have that backup ambulance, we may go without an ambulance in the city for 12 hours, depending on if we could get the county's ambulance, whether or not somebody else is using it at that point. It could be a couple of days, depending on what, what the issues. We also try to staff it, depending on what we have for volunteer members or paid-on-call members, we try to staff it for some of the events that we have, the football games on Friday nights. And like I said, that goes back to whether or not we have volunteer staffing for it. Sorry.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Public Works.
So we'll start off with Dan's on page 55.
Next question, we love 11:50.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Just kidding. So we're going to have a lot of questions about your projects?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
I hope not. Should be good. Okay, starting out for Public Works, I know we have the Riverfront Development costs in with the Public Works budget, and I know the finance director has this covered by TIF. The, there's $205,200 of this, 2.4 million is for design, observation, and administration, which City Council approved earlier this year. That's for Strand Associates to perform that function. The remaining balance is expected to go to construction for the water mains and services, sewer mains and services, the stormwater collection and discharge, the city streets, sidewalks, street signage, markings, lighting, et cetera. So I know Strand is currently designing that. There'd be a more, I guess, a hard number coming once they, they finish design, but I think, Mark, you were focusing around 2.2.
We're required to spend in the first phase, $2,550,000, so 2.4 of this is out of the Public Works area. A lot of the infrastructure work will come out of there, and then there's some, the other part you'll see, this comes out of parks, for the park that we going in, so it's kind of split between the two, but majority of the cost is just the infrastructure we're required to spend. It's required to spend in the developer's agreement, 2.2, $2,550,000, so.
Moving on, also, by the way, if you have questions at any time while I'm talking, please feel free to ask me. Next item would be the purchase and installation of emersey generators. This is a cost of $300,000, includes purchase, installation, observation, administration. We're looking to purchase two diesel-powered generators. One of them will be for City Hall Administration, Fire Department, and the PD Wing. This will not be used to power WELL 1. We initially had a goal of that, but there's two different incoming voltages that it, it would be just too much to reconfigure the power to, to match the generator, so we eliminated WELL 1. The generator that is currently used at City Hall right now will be removed and taken down to the DPW shop. We will look at installing that at the Public Works garage at a later date, not, not in 2018, so that'll be a future project.
Dan?
Yes?
This is a little bit off-topic, but I feel compelled to raise it right now. I was in Boston last week, and there was a Tesla dealer in the building I was staying in, or in the community, and they had the Powerwall systems there, which are the massive battery packs, lithium battery packs, that Tesla has developed for both residential and commercial power backups. And the idea is that particularly if you have a solar system, you're going to charge this battery up, and if the, if the power ever goes down, you're going to have battery there for power backup. And they size the systems for the capacity of your need. Now, obviously, when you have something like this, it's limited. I mean, eventually, the battery runs out, you know, if you were out of power for seven days. But I don't know what sorts of rules regulate the things that we're doing here, and, but we're talking about a diesel generator versus this battery backup, and it just, when I was there looking at it, I was thinking, wow, I wonder how the city might ever use this. I know it's not appropriate to go way off course here, but I just thought I'd mention that. I don't know, I mean, I know there's a time lag between when something gets approved and the money gets spent, but I don't know if the city might consider. I mean, it, it could be a way for us to actually save a bit of money and never have to put fuel in the generator.
Right. One thing we have to keep in mind is, I believe, we're not certain that we're going to be keeping the solar system after the seven years, the first seven years. I think that's when we're first due to review the contract. As far as WELL 3, we do have to have standby generator per NRCO.
Oh, okay.
So if, if, if we did consider that, the City Hall generator would be one to look at.
Okay.
Brad might have more information regarding the solar system. He's been managing that, that whole scenario.
Okay.
Quick follow-up on that. So when you say per code, is that city code, or is that some other code?
As far as WELL 3, that's, that's state statute.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's for, for water systems.
Okay.
Yep. Right. So, so there'll be two, two diesel generators. Both of them will have automatic transfer switches, and both of them, they're going to be engineered to be as seamless as possible. At WELL 3, mainly because if, if the booster pump and the WELL pump is operating and we lose power, the goal is to not have the pumps shut down and restart during, during the switchover. The same thing for, for City Hall. The PD had some other requirements that they asked Strand to look at for, for a quick switchover. I'm not really quite sure the details of that, but I know the engineering that Strand has performed was able to cover both of those needs for, for the generators, so. Again, that, that price tag is $300,000. Okay, moving on, the street repair and maintenance program. That's the standard program that we've had in place. It's the annual resurfacing of the streets, the millennial overlay, the micro-surfacing, and we are asking for a little bit less for next year, realizing that we have a big overall budget, capital budget for the city. Looking at $200,000 for that work. I'll be completing my road rating within the next 30 days, so I'll, I'll be completing my list for, for street maintenance during that time. Initially, we're, we're looking at Shore Acres as one of the main roads that we would resurface. That's one of the remaining few roads that's in pretty rough shape right now, and there's a few other areas that we're going to look at.
Okay.
Yes?
What do we normally have for our annual street repair?
It's been right around $300,000, $275,000 a few years ago. Okay, next item is the Atwood Avenue Design and Reconstruction. This project is led by the City of Madison. Basically, they are in the preliminary design phase for Atwood Avenue, looking at reconstruction from Cottage Grove Road to South Fair Oaks Avenue. And the construction for this work, they're looking at a 2020, 2021 timeframe. The City of Manona does have the two southbound lanes, beginning at the East Side Club and going to Cottage, Cottage Grove Road. From there, it turns into a county highway. The project includes new pavement, curb and gutter, on-street bike lanes, sidewalk, off-street bike path, intersection improvements, and various utility updates. Just came out yesterday, they had advertised for a public involvement meeting or a public information meeting to take place on Wednesday, October 4th, at Ulbrich Botanical Gardens. So they, they will be sending out notices to all Manona residents in the construction zone, and we will be putting this information on our city website as well, linking to the Atwood project. So as far as Manona goes, the preliminary design is for 2017. Our participation cost is $70,000. The final design is 2018 and 2019. We will be billed in 2018 for all work that they've done for us, and the construction for the portion that Manona is in is targeted for 2020. Okay, moving on, the PCB removal.
So, but, so they're, they're doing the preliminary design this year?
They have preliminary design for, for 2017. Start of final design will begin in 2018. Brad has been our staff person going to the Atwood meetings pretty much for all of 2017 already.
Okay.
They won't be billing us for any of the work until next year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
So just so I'm clear, is $70,000 the most will pay for this work? Or this is just for the design, then we're going to get a bill that we don't know the amount of?
Right.
In the future.
$70,000 is just for the work that will take place in 2018 and any, any work previous to that, including this year.
Do we have any, I mean, this is probably a dumb question, any rough estimate of how much that would be in 2019, 2018? Or 2020?
For, for 2019, 2020, construction?
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand? Oh, okay. Sorry.
A more firm number will come towards the end of 2018 that will update our capital budget.
Okay. Yeah, it's just general estimate. Thanks.
Moving on to the PCB removal engineering. We are entering the final year of, of engineering in 2018, hoping to complete final design. The program consists of finalizing sediment dredging design and the preparation of contract specifications and bidding documents for the removal of our PCB-contaminated soil or sediment in the Winaco Park Lagoon. Now, the, the work that Strand is doing for the Public Works Department is focused solely on removing the PCB material. I know the Parks Director has more plans to do dredging further to the north, Environments Park, as well as the Winaco Park channels, and I believe Jake will be talking about So we are, we are wrapping up our engineering in 2018, and in 2019, we are hoping to finally remove the PCB-contaminated sediment from, from the Winaco Park Lagoon. The work that we've done so far in 2017, we've continued our sampling for the DNR requirements. They've done two topographic surveys of the top and bottom of the, the channel north of Nichols, the Overbank Land Survey. They've done preliminary design, and then they're also preparing preliminary technical specifications, and that's all happening this year, so.
So you're estimating about $375,000 for that work eventually?
As of right now.
I saw that what you've got in here.
Yep, and that, that was a number that I've got from Strand, probably June, July timeframe. We'll have a better number next year at this time for 2019.
And one other thing, did you, I've got a note here that you were applying for a grant that might cover part of this?
Yes.
Item in the budget.
Yep, we will be applying for another DNR grant. The DNR grants that we've received so far are for $25,000 reimbursement, so the city is responsible for the remaining balance of that, and we're hoping that'll be the case again next year.
Does DNR dictate the timeline on, on, for a dedication?
The, well, I guess going back to the start of this, we had a 2014 stormwater project where, where we found PCBs in the, in the samples we took for our culvert replacement project. At that point, the DNR got involved, and they've allowed us to take the time we, we've had to do all the research, all the sampling. We've been in, in communication with the DNR from the very first day that this is, that we've been made aware of this. As far as the, the year for dredging, that's been indicated in all the reports that Strand has completed and has sent in to the DNR, and to, to this point, they've been satisfied with what Strand has turned in, so. They, they've been with us every step of the way, so. Moving on to the Winaco Road Design Review, we're asking for $15,000 to complete the design review of Winaco Road. The main portion of that review will be from Maywood going south to Bridge Road, and there's a few areas to the north, mainly at, at Outlook. I know there, there's been some complaints that have been received on that stretch over the past few years. They're going to look at the entire stretch, but mainly the complaint areas, and I know, I think very, pretty much all of you on, on City Council have had received complaints over the past few years for various stretches of that, so we're going to, we're going to take a look at that in, in 2018, and I think we feel. And I think we feel 15,000 is, is a good number to, to cover that.
And this is something that we're, we put in here to be used in conjunction with the Bike Pedestrian Committee that?
Right.
I want to get appointed at some point fairly soon, so.
Right. If I could just add to that, and you and Mary and I had talked about this, and then Dan and I talked about it yesterday, the possibility of, of adding, and Dan's recommendation was to add a separate project rather than just more money to this, but to have a separate project to hire a traffic engineering consultant to look at pedestrian bicycle facilities for other areas of the city that would, so that might be an amendment that I'll be bringing forward. I think you were, were going to be able maybe to give me some idea of what the cost for that would be, not right now, but.
Okay. I, yes, yeah.
Okay. And it wouldn't be sort of, I mean, it would be citywide in a sense that it could cover streets in various parts of the city, but it's not like comprehensive, like every single street in the city sort of thing. So that's my thought, anyway.
Okay. Or should I go?
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, approximately eight years ago, I know I spoke to a consultant who said that 50,000 would not be an unreasonable, and this was eight years ago, but 50,000 would be a minimum for a full city assessment.
And one thing in relationship to this, I did ask Dan to send out a letter to everyone, 63 residents on the lower half of that area from Maywood to Bridge Road about trash cans in the street and on the bump outs and brush, overgrown and brush left there and leaves and things, because it's, we've had a lot of comments from people who ride their bikes and can't ride through there. It's just really dangerous. And that went out last week, and I, actually I drove through there today and it really, today was trash day and for the most part, it looked like they were, you know, abiding by what we asked them to do, so.
Yep, a lot of the carts have been placed in the driveways and the, in the terrace areas.
Yeah.
Still a few out there yet, but good progress.
Yeah, so, I mean, we'll keep an eye on that going forward, but.
Did, did you get any pushback or response, feedback, I should say?
Um, I think I've received about five phone calls. Two of them were wondering if, if they were the problem. And I basically, no, everybody got the letter. So we're, we're trying to, just to get the word out. Some concerns about where to put their leaves come leaf collection time. There is one residence that has a retaining wall right up to the back of the curb. So we're going to work with that, that property owner and try and coordinate the leaf pickup. But I think two others were related to some trimming back of the vegetation. And that, that stretch, our guys go out there and, and complete some trimming every year because it, it gets past the curb. The bikers, you know, they don't like riding through the vegetation. So there's, not only Winnequa Road, but there's a few other areas that our staff goes out and trims back every year, so. But for, for sending out 63 letters and having five phone calls, that's not too bad.
No.
Okay, moving on to the next item, the DPW garage repairs, asking for 12,000 for this work. The staff would like to replace, there's, there's a concrete manhole cutout block wall that's a de facto retaining wall that we'd like to replace and put some actual retaining wall block in its place. Our crew will do the work. The estimated cost for that is around 4,600. And if you're trying to envision what I'm, what I'm talking about, just imagine a, a manhole and a concrete cutout where a pipe goes into a manhole, that actual concrete cutout, there's a couple hundred of them. The guys took those in the past and made a retaining wall out of it. And it's, it's, it's to the point where it's looking pretty rough and failing and we'd like to put an actual wall in there, so. The next item that's part of this project is replacing the floor drain system in the original parking area of the garage. The, the grate and drain system is original. Our crew can do all the concrete work, buy the materials and install it, and that estimated cost is around 7,000, so. Some, just some housekeeping items there. Next item is our annual sidewalk improvement program, asking for 8,000. Once again, that seems to be a good number that, that works for us. We complete the occasional sidewalk panel replacement. We do our sidewalk grinding program with that money and the occasional cracked curb and gutter that that money also goes to. So it's, it's funded our, our needs quite well for the past few years. Next item would be the right-of-way tree replacement program. In the past, we've, we've had 15,000 in that account. I know around five, six years ago, we've had up to 25,000 in that account and we've, we've trimmed that back to the point where if we have a, a need to increase it, mainly do the emerald ash bore, we would do it at that time. Well, that time has come. We were asking for 5,000 more dollars for the replacement program, going from 15 up to 20,000. We are seeing an increase in the amount of ash trees that, that we are taking down as far as the terrace trees. There are other storm damaged trees that we've had to remove over the years, so this, this money is, is basically replacing what we take down through disease or, or damage.
I think, isn't there some kind of maple disease going around too?
There's, there's a new, I don't know if it's new, I think it's been around, it's just, it's making itself more noticeable, but there's a maple tree disease that the foresters are being made aware of in this area. I don't have a lot of information about it, but Mike Johnson, our, our contracted forester, he's been well informed on this disease. He's been to training sessions. So I'm not sure if it's, if it's here, how bad it is. I don't, I don't have a lot of information on that, but that is correct, Mary. There's, there's a maple, a maple tree disease that, that could be in our future here, so. Moving on, the next item is requesting 9,000 to update the street tree survey that was last completed in the year 2004 and 2005. We do have the tree layer on our GIS program now and since 2014, our staff has been updating it. We do have a need though to go through all 4,000 of our terrace trees and complete a new survey. And we're asking for 9,000 to do that. And we would like to hire an intern, a forestry, forester intern to complete 350 hours of that work. It'd be a paid internship somewhere between 10 and 12 dollars an hour. It'd be supplemented by a landscape engineer, either at Strand Associates or Verbeck or, our current engineering firms. They would be taking the, basically the, the iPad in the field with them and making updates right to our, our tree layer program on the GIS. So we're hoping and, and thinking that this can be a pretty efficient tree survey update, so.
And you think that's something that an intern will be qualified to, to update? Because I know before we used professional foresters or?
The, the data layer is already built. All the trees that we have are still there from the 2004 survey in the program. Since 2014, trees that we know that we've taken out, that has been updated on the program. Brad has done a nice job with him and his interns, keeping that layer updated, as well as Jeff, our, our street operations foreman. I think the intern that we'll get from, most likely UW, will have some pretty good experience or at least program knowledge of, of the trees that they're looking at. And again, we'd have that supplemented by, by an, an actual landscape engineer, so.
Okay.
Okay, moving on into the water utility portion of the capital budget, the fire hydrant replacement program. We're seeking 50,000 once again. Basically, this is year three of this program. We started out with the need to replace roughly 60 hydrants. These are hydrants that date back to some of the first hydrants we've put in, in the city. And they're basically hydrants that they no longer make repair parts for. These are hydrants that are, are not working most efficiently compared to the new hydrants that we have. So we are making headway. We've had 13 hydrants and 13 hydrant valves replaced with this program to date. And we're hoping to purchase another, purchase and install another, another seven hydrants or so next year, so.
Dan, what happens to the hydrants we remove?
The hydrants that we remove, if we are able to take pieces off them for the ones we still have in the system, we take the valuable pieces off. After that, we recycle those. We turn in a, a check to Mark probably about every two to three months of a couple hundred dollars for, for scrap metal.
It might be fun to install a couple of those in the dog park.
We, we've thought about installing one of them in the center, but we haven't got to that point yet. Public Works Park. We have 18 old hydrants sitting in the yard yet that we need to strip down and recycle. Perhaps one of those will be put out there one day.
That'd be great.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, moving on, power washing, the water tower, that is strictly a pretty straightforward job to clean the mold off the bottom of the water tower, seeking 9,000 to do that. And as part of that, any touch of painting that is needed for paint that might have come off with the power washing. Typically have to power wash the tower probably every eight to 10, 12 years. And we're, we're pretty close to, to needing to get that done. You don't notice it a whole lot because the bottom part of the water tower is dark blue and that's, I'm almost thinking that's by design to hide that mold a little bit, so. Looking to get that done in 2018.
Dan, is, is this something that we do in-house or?
No, this will be contracted out.
Is there a reason we don't?
Excuse me?
Is there a reason we don't do this?
Lack of experience and, I mean.
It's the whole tower, not just the base.
Right, this is the, the big.
The bottom of the?
Yep.
The top.
Right, the bottom of the top, yeah. They'll, they'll rent the, the high lifts and all that to get up there. I don't know if I'd want our guys doing that, so.
Yep, that'd make sense.
Yeah. The next item, moving into the storm sewer portion of the capital budget, we are seeking 30,000 to make some storm sewer list station panel upgrades and associate SCADA updates. I have a summary of the work on the, on the sheet here. We're looking to have some modifications made that will allow remote start and stop from the SCADA computer. Basically, every, everything that we're asking for here will take place at all three of our stormwater list stations in order to, or in effort to make our program more efficient where the crew can make changes from at home or from away from work, so they don't have to come in and make these changes. Basically, we, we would be saving money on overtime and if a problem can wait till the next morning, that'd be great. So I know the modifications that we've made in the water system, we're saving significant amount of overtime already on that work, so. Quickly to go through this, programming would, would allow remote start and stop from the SCADA computer. It would allow pump alternation from the SCADA computer, meaning there's two pumps per lift station. If we have a problem with one, we'd be able to shut one off at home and, and turn the other pump on, on the float system. So be able to do that right from our computer at home or anywhere, anywhere that, whoever's on call, wherever they take the computer with them or their smartphone, they'd be able to make, make that, that change from wherever they're at. Programming to allow a remote set point control from the SCADA computer. Basically, if we want the pump to kick on at a certain height in the, in the wet well, we can make that change. Programming to allow a remote reset of a pump fail. So if, if one of pump one or pump two would fail, we can reset that right, right from the computer. Provide a control logic to allow remote acknowledgement of a pump control panel, external alarm. Again, that's something we have to come in to do right now. And provide a new four-channel analog, analog input card on the existing PLC at all three lift stations. And then the final piece here that makes everything work is install a submersible level transducer at each location. And having a transducer allows us to, to make all those, all those changes right from the computer. So that'll be from all three stormwater lift stations. And as we move into the sewer, sanitary sewer portion, there's another one of these that I'll go through when we get to that point. Any questions on that one? Okay, moving on, storm basin preliminary engineering for REACH 64. We're looking to do phase two of this study next year. The, the work will include a technical memorandum in draft and final formats documenting the alternatives, alternative analysis, the opinions of probable construction cost and implementation They are looking at Maywood Park for a large pond or a small pond. They are looking at the intersection of Maywood and Winnequa Road. We have a sedimentation tank right there in the right-of-way with a large outfall to Squaw Bay. That's a potential location. They're looking at Stonebridge Park, Waterman Way Park, and the Winnequa Park Lagoons. This is for REACH 64. This is the, the biggest watershed that we have in Manona that is not meeting our MS4 permit. So this work that they're doing this year and for next year will identify areas that we can improve our stormwater treatment within the city of Manona. And coming out of 2018, we'll have a better idea of what type of treatment devices or alternatives we can do here in Manona, whether it's a stor, a large stormwater pond, more of the smaller sedimentation removal basins, but that, that's what this plan is looking at. We already have adaptive management program to, to meet our Rock River TMDL. We have to still fulfill the, the obligation of our MS4 permit to reach 40% TSS and 27% phosphorus, and that's what this, this study will do. Again, the adaptive management program takes us greater than that to help us meet our Rock River limits, so.
We have one over the next two years, oh, for 1920. So it's going to be over a million dollar project that we'll need to get in 1920. And REACH 64, Gateway Green.
Right, for 2020, we have REACH 64 construction and then Gateway Green administration and administration services. The Gateway Green, we, we had a study done, I think it was last year, by Strand Associates. There's been some neighborhood flooding in that area. So in 2018, or 2019, we'll, we'll pick up final engineering for Gateway Green and final engineering for REACH 64 and combine that into one, one project. Near Christie Circle on Gateway Green, they get significant flooding on, on some of the heavier rain events to the point where it, it jumps the curb, cuts the yards, and there's a home there where the water, basically, he opens his garage door and his service door and it goes through his garage, so.
Several feet deep.
Several feet deep. He, he has videos of all this. So we're going to look at all options for, for that Gateway Green fix, but that's, that's in our future here.
And this all ties together into one big project, is that?
We, we, we are, are going to plan for it that way. We, we should save money on, on design, on, on bidding, construction by, by lumping it into one project, right?
Any other questions about that? Brian?
Dan, I know we've talked before about some of our, our stormwater collection areas, grates have the collection basins, I'm not sure of the correct.
The, the sump pits in the catch basins.
And some don't, where it's more of just, goes down a few feet and then straight pipe out to the water.
Right.
And how much in the, I think in the REACH 64 study, how much could be resolved by addressing some of our high problematic areas? some of our high problematic areas? So there are some of these storm collection areas that many residents contact me about of, like, these are just piled up and every rainstorm craps is piling, and how many of those, if, if we address those issues, would help take care of some of these other items?
We're always going to have leaf and branch debris buildup on top the catch basin. I mean, it's actually doing, the lid is doing what it's supposed to do by not letting that in there. You know, we, we do seek assistance from the property owner or an owner nearby if they notice the, the lid full of debris, especially after a, a significant rain event or during, if they, if they can safely do it, to help remove some of that debris and just lift it out with a rake and set it on the, on the terrace behind. That will always be there. As far as the number of sump pits with, or catch basins with sump pit, Brad, do you have that number up hand?
We don't have data for that.
So I don't know if the REACH 64 review is looking at how we can control that, but I, just, just knowing, you know, how, how we, we've cleaned the streets before and what happens, I don't know if we, if we will ever prevent that from happening. I mean, we, we do already sweep our streets every three to four weeks. I mean, if, if we desire to have that sweeper out every day, you know, it, it requires a staff person to put in there. I don't know if I have a good answer for you.
So maybe a simpler way of asking is, the ones that don't have sump pits? I understand the grate, and I think that's a, that's an easy to understand, yeah, if stuff's there, that's great, like, dig it out and... But ones that don't have a sump pit, with or without it being caught at the grate level, whatever's bypassing the grate is going straight out to the lake.
Correct.
The ones that have sump pits, I assume are doing some better work of being able to take care of some of the solid side going through the grate or beyond the grate opening? And if we focused on the ones that didn't have a sump pit, would we be making a dent in the number for the REACH 64?
I'm not sure. We, we have to get an inventory of how many catch basins we have that don't have the sump pits. I know every project that we've had, probably over the last ten to twelve years, have been designed to, to install the sump pit catch basin. Anytime that, you know, our staff rebuilds a, a catch basin, it's, it's one with a sump I'm not even sure if I can get you an accurate number, Brian, but I, I can get you the number of catch basins that we do have with sump pits. I know our guys inventory that because we, the ones with the pits, we, we suck out two to three times a year, so I, I can get you at least that, that number. But I, I do believe we have an overall catch basin number. Let me work on that.
Okay.
I'll see what I can get you. Okay, any other questions on that one? Okay, moving on, general storm sewer repair. We've had this in the capital budget the past few years. We're seeking twenty-five thousand dollars. This is for, for the problem areas that arise throughout the year, mainly it's, it's due to the storm main culverts that have corroded away, and typically we find that it happens through a sinkhole that we noticed in the road or, or in a yard. So this money goes to replace small sections of, of storm main, lining, small sections of storm main, the occasional replacement of a catch basin, things like that. And that, that number has worked pretty good for us over the past few years. Next item, moving on to the sanitary sewer portion of the capital budget, similar to what I discussed before for the stormwater. First item is a sanitary sewer listation and SCADA update. We are seeking fifty-six thousand dollars for, for the sewer budget. We have, excuse me, we have eight list stations in the sanitary sewer utility, basically requiring the same kind of work for the control panel modification and the, the SCADA computer Are there any, are there any questions on this portion?
Sorry, and you don't have to answer this now. I'm interested in, how much are we saving by doing these updates? I understand that obviously they have to mark it in certain hours and overtime and different things. I'm just interested in, with these updates.
On, on the water side, we are, we're, we're saving, I believe, right around eight to ten thousand dollars a year. And we, we've invested more money in the water utility on these same kind of upgrades. I think for 2017, I think we had twenty-one thousand dollars in the budget for these upgrades. But also in 2012, we spent quite a bit of money. I think it was a, like a ninety-five, ninety-six thousand dollar update to the entire SCADA system. The last time that was done was when, I think it was in the mid-eighties. So the money that we are investing, I think we are saving on overtime. And having this happen on the stormwater and sanitary sewer side, I, I think we're gonna, we're gonna save maybe not as much, but probably, probably over five thousand dollars a year for sure. The, the biggest cost savings we're going to experience is, is the two-hour overtime automatic call-in that we would have to pay for someone to drive in, do five minutes worth of work, and then go back home. We do pay fifteen minutes of overtime for a staff person to log on the computer, address the alarm, make sure everything is okay, and log back off. We, we think that's a fair trade. And they, they are happy with it because they don't have to leave their Christmas dinner. They don't have to leave their boys' ballgame. They can do everything right from, from their phone or, or iPad, so.
Perfect, thanks.
Yep. Okay, moving on, sanitary sewer infiltration and inflow study, often referred to as I&amp;I study. This is for the sanitary sewer system in relation to targeting areas of the system for groundwater infiltration into the, the mains and the manholes. The survey includes monitoring each listation wet well, that, that's where the, the raw water accumulates prior to it being pumped to MMSD. We're going to monitor it for increased pump runtimes in relation to rain events, monitoring sewer main at the laterals for clear water flows. This is probably the number one area that we see groundwater infiltration is where the sewer lateral connects to the main. So we're going to be monitoring that. We're going to use smoke testing. That's where they will plug certain sections of, of the main and introduce like a, a smoke bomb. And everywhere that there is a, a crack in the pipe or, or a separation, the smoke will actually surface and it'll actually come through the ground. And so we'll be able to identify a break there. And then also through dye testing. You might recall last year at, at budget time in the operating budget, we had a significant increase in the amount that we are paying to MMSD for disposal or, or treatment charges. At the time, we thought the majority of the jump or the increase in price was related to I&amp;I. We later found out after our budgeting season and, and the first part of 2017 that they replaced all their flow monitoring equipment. So they had old flow measuring devices, now they have modern flow measuring devices, which now read more accurately. So that was part of the problem. But there's still a portion of our system that we have I&amp;I, and we want to tackle that. And once we can find that and eliminate it, our charges that we, we pay to MMSD will reduce, which should impact our operating budget, bring that cost down. So, phase one of the I&amp;I study will be in 2018, and if we need to do a phase two, I'll bring that forward next year for 2019, so. Any questions on that?
Yeah, Dan, so I see the two, the study in 2018 and 2019 possibly, but I don't see anything unless I'm missing it in any future year to address whatever problems are uncovered through the study.
Right. Simply because we don't know, and I, I would have a hard time putting a number out there on that. So I think once we find out if we have a problem, then I would introduce something on next year's capital budget. If we, if we find areas in our responsible areas that we need to update, if we find areas of I&amp;I on a sewer lateral, we'll be contacting the property owner. The property owner is responsible for the lateral too and including the connection to the main. So, we, we just don't know at this point.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, moving on, the last item for the projects is the annual sanitary sewer repair program, similar to the storm water program, seeking twenty-five thousand dollars here. And this again covers any small section lining, any manhole repairs. We also use this money on our milling overlay areas for manhole, manhole leveling. This number has worked quite well for us over the years as well, so. Any other questions on, on that?
Public Works Equipment is on the very next page in seventy-six. If you're going to look at descriptions.
Okay, moving on to equipment, the first one, first item that we have is our street sweeper, but I guess before I get into that, Mark, did this make it in the, the capital budget, the, the template for the point scoring system?
Yeah, it's on page eighty-three.
Okay. I've included that in, in case people didn't have that or, or forgot about how we operate the points rating system.
I guess it's eighty-six actually is the...
We, we use an APWA model of a points rating system that Public Works Committee and City Council approved, I think in, I think it was in 2012. So every piece of equipment that we bring forward in Public Works, and I think a few other, other departments are now using the points model system for their equipment replacement, it's worked out quite well, and I, I believe Council feels the program is working as well, so. That being said, the first item, the, the street sweeper replacement, looking to replace a 2007 Elgin street sweeper. The city staff sweeps our streets every three to four weeks, April through November. The current model is a vacuum sweeper, which removes greater amounts of debris and sediment in, in the asphalt pores that are often missed by a broom sweeper. The street sweeping solids removal totals are reported as a best management practice on the city's MS4 stormwater permit. We average eighteen hundred miles a year on the street sweeper, and we collect about two-hundred-and-ninety cubic yards every year. Our staff has demoed the models of the Elgin, Johnson, Schwartz, and the Tim Cone sweepers, and we're seeking two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars for this replacement. It's, it's a high figure, and this, this amount is for a middle-of-the-road street sweeper. We have test-driven models that range two-hundred-and-seventy, two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars, but those are considered the Cadillac versions, which we're not looking for. The value of our current sweeper is estimated to be between thirty and thirty-five thousand. We have to figure out if we're going to trade this in or sell it at auction, whichever one that we get, get more money for. The, the, the street sweeper is of value to, to smaller communities. They rely on, on these types of sweepers. They, they can't, they can't budget for the, the bigger sweepers like, like our city can, so it'll, it'll still be used by another community. Has a points rating of thirty. It's a high, a high use, a severe u, use sweeper. Major components that will soon need to be replaced include the pickup head, the impeller housing. Other components soon needing work include two engines. There's a, there's a engine on the chassis and an engine on the sweeper, as well as the drivetrains.
Any questions?
Okay, moving on, our next item is a, a Public Works equipment package. The total value of that is twenty thousand dollars. Rather than seek approval for each project individually, I did put them all in one, one equipment package. The first item as part of that package is the, a mower attachment for the new Ventrac mower that we purchased this year. Looking to buy a rear discharge mowing deck that will mount on the front of the Ventrac. That costs us thirty-two hundred dollars. We're looking to purchase a Rhino Multi-Pro post driver for twenty-seven hundred dollars, and I believe we have a picture of that in the, in the packet as well. It's a one-man post driver. Right now, we use the, the old-fashioned manual pounder, which takes a, takes a toll on the body. If we can't use that, we pull, pull behind our air compressor, but that also has a seventy-five pound pounder that the guys have to hold on to, so this will be quite an upgrade from what we currently have. Part of the equipment package also includes a, a new mower trailer for two-thousand-two-hundred dollars. It will also be used to transport our portable road grinder, our, our pavement marking machine. They'll give us two trailers in the department for staff to use. Next item is the replacement of a, the ice machine down at the shop for twenty-one hundred dollars. That is believed to be about fourteen years old. It's, it's worn out its useful life. That ice machine is used on a daily basis by the park staff, DPW staff, even throughout winter, the guys, the guys use that. Now, the next item is the plow truck Insta-Chains, two sets for five-thousand-six-hundred dollars. There's also a picture of that in your handout, and that basically, instead of putting chains on our plow trucks, these are, are drop-down chains through a, a toggle switch in the cab. If we hit areas of icy roads on hills and curves, we hit the switch, the chains drop down, instant traction. It's kind of nice. It, I believe our new fire trucks, one or two of the trucks has, has it on there. Our new plow truck that we bought last year, the Insta-Chains are on there as well. The next item is a floor jack replacement for twenty-three hundred dollars. It replaces a, a thirty-year-old system in the mechanic's bay that, that Ron currently uses. We do have a picture of that in our, our handout as well. And the final item is a portable truck ramp system for seventeen hundred dollars, and that replaces a wood block system that the mechanic has used for quite a while, so. All that combined is a price tag of twenty thousand dollars.
Any questions about any of that?
Okay. The last item for Public Works is the replacement of a Chevrolet 2500 pickup truck with a plow attachment. We are seeking the same model-type truck, whether it's a Ford F-250 or Chevy 2500. This truck has a points rating total of twenty-seven, which qualifies for replacement. This truck is used by the street department employees, the part-time summer mowing crew as well as, as well as facility maintenance for parking lot snow plowing throughout the winter. We intend to buy the replacement truck on the state cooperative purchasing contract, and I think the, the truck cost is going to be between twenty-seven and twenty-nine thousand dollars, and the plow cost between five and seven thousand dollars, so we should, we should be within a thirty-six thousand dollar request.
Questions?
No.
Done?
Not on, not on this equipment, but general. Earlier I indicated I was going to ask, I think Dan and probably Jake about their 2019 budgets, which seemed like a lot better idea at 5:30 than it does now. So rather than belabor that tonight, I think maybe save that for the first read, when we probably won't, won't be as involved, we're lengthy, and, but do still want to come back to that to look at projects in, well, 2018 and 2019, but in particular 19, that could be delayed, cut, or otherwise disposed of, so. could be delayed, cut or otherwise disposed of, so.
Okay. Anyone else?
Unless somebody really wants me to go into it.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. And now, last but not least, or second last but not least?
Definitely not least.
No. Jake Anderson.
Here's the entertainment for tonight.
Yes, tonight's entertainment.
I think I was asked to go last overall, it's entire.
I just meant the size of the budget.
Page eighty-seven starts his park board.
Would you guys mind if we went like super speed on this one? I don't, you know all, I think everyone knows how to read in this room, so you can see what's in the packet on the sheets. I don't need to reread them for you, but we can go through project by project and if they have any questions. I think most of them are pretty self-explanatory.
If you didn't have so many projects, wouldn't have to go so fast.
Well, compared to the last department head, I have virtually none, so.
Hmm.
Never ends.
Good night, Dan.
So, our, our number-one rated project from the Parks Board is Wild Haven Park, so this is to provide a observation deck at the end of Wild Haven Park overlooking the lake with an accessible path from the road if, and then redoing the steps going down to the water. So, we had $150,000 budgeted for engineering and construction. This budget has $135,000, so if it does get approved during capital, we'd be looking at doing a budget amendment to do the design yet this fall with the saving, with the rest of the Huska Park project that didn't get done, so we still have some funding left this year. Our lakefront parks are becoming ever more valuable every year as new houses get built and our public views of the lake are diminished and so I think it was a prerogative of the mayor and the Parks Board to really look at what we can do to make sure that our, our lakefront parks have a great accessibility for people and observation.
Questions?
Would this deck just be for observation or would it be also for recreational fishing?
I suppose, I mean, they're going to be fifteen feet up in the air, so it's going to cantilever out, so it'll be a deck that will go out over the water a little bit, so you'll be, you know, probably ten feet out kind of over the water, so to speak.
Did you say there was an older pier that you might be able to re?
Yeah, so, yep, part of that is that we have the old, let me see, Lottis decking and floats still down at Public Works storage that we can refurbish with just a new metal frame and get a pier at the end of those steps as well.
And that would help for fishing.
Correct. Now, we might need someone's boat or pontoon to tug it down to Schluter at the end of the season, but we know of a few people that can help us out with that.
Anything else?
Speaking of boats, the next project is lawn replacements at Tony Wath the Trail and Winaco Trail.
It's not a boat.
Yeah, well, needing a boat, you know, one of these years, there may be a pontoon request from the Parks Department for programming. We just need space to store it, but. So, both the Tony Wath the Trail and the Winaco Trail boat launches are, are small. I would call them our Manona launches, a lot of Manona residents launch off both of them. Both are failing pretty bad, so we're in design phase right now. The design documents are basically done and this would be moving forward for, one of them would be fixed up and then they would move on to the other one, so we'd still have one of those open next summer. And this would be a project that would be bid out in January right away, as it's basically ready to go with the, with the plan we're designing for this year.
Yes, we're good. Questions?
So, Huska Park tennis court renovation, this is, we had money to do crack filling and coloring of the courts this year. The five original courts or, had deteriorated so much that crack filling and, and sealant wasn't going to do anything, so it was going to be flushing money down the toilet, basically. And so, we kind of changed gears and went with a conceptual master plan is what we're working on this year for Huska Park. This would be basically the replacement of the asphalt of the original five. The three, so, backup, five courts were built in 2000 and then the three more were built in 2006. The three that were built in 2006 are perfect, not a crack on them, but the, the original five are really bad, so there's some base material issues that are going on there that need to get addressed, so that's basically taking up all the asphalt, making sure that there's enough base, recompacting asphalt, coloring lines on those courts. The remaining amount, we're estimating that to be at like 175. The remaining would be to finish up the master plan for Huska Park and improvements which are currently scheduled for 2020, but we have some initial site plan options for a master plan at Huska Park stemming from our university project and working with our current consultant, but that's what both of those projects for.
I've got some questions about this number and I thought we talked about this when I first met with you. Here says design engineering, $25,000, tennis court reconstruction, $150,000, but it equals $200.
Two hundred, yeah.
Is the twenty-five supposed to be fifty?
That's Jake Anderson math, yeah.
Jake Anderson math, yeah. So, the design should be fifty?
It's going to be, it could be up to fifty if we finalize construction, some construction drawings on master plan development or if we're looking at some grant funding opportunities for potential trails that are going through Huska Park.
So, you're looking for $200?
Yeah. I want a little bit of buffer. We don't know, I mean, asphalt prices are like the stock market sometimes, so we don't know what we're going to get. We're assuming that they're going to be increased with the, you know, price of oil going up. That seems to be the number-one indicator on, on what you're paying for asphalt.
Any other questions? Okay.
Riverfront park design and restroom construction is part of the Phase One, so the build-out of the public restrooms for Phase One and then design money for the rest of the park for $150. It may be broken down a little bit, the, the majority of that's going to be for the construction cost of building out the restrooms from what was in the development agreement that you're all aware of. The rest of it's going to be for schematic conceptual design of what the park will look like. And so, ideally, we'll start with schematic design, go through committees in 2018, 2019, do actual design of park amenities, bid it out late 2019 for 2020 construction, unless you guys want to speed that process up more.
Questions? Nope.
The next project is our Cold Springs Avenue lake viewing area, so north of Schluter, south of Strombridge, there's a dead-end road that has, is city property. There was some clearing of some invasives done by Public Works and it kind of spawned some thought of members of the Park Board about this would make a great spot to be able to have a, a view of the lake and so we went Parks Tour in, in June and looked at some opportunities that we could provide another access point for residents to look at the lake. So this is a landscaping project that would add a, a path, a grass paver path down to the, the water, bench, some boulders along the shoreline and some stormwater management plantings that would go along there.
Questions?
Park truck replacement for $50,000. This is for our full-time park maintenance truck. I've got the rating sheet in my office, so I apologize, but I'll email it out, but it was a '27, so it's a ten-year-old truck with 75,000 miles on it. It's a heavy-duty truck that's used every day. Is at the end of its useful life for us.
What would you do with the old one?
Go to auction. It's two, it's a 3,500 truck, so it's too big of a truck for our seasonals to drive around and with some of the issues that it's having or going to be having, I don't feel comfortable with having other staff drive it. Dream Park, did you know the Dream Park is 20 years old this year?
I believe that.
The playground is, is 20, so the staining and surfacing is like every three years or so kind of a maintenance item to keep the wood up. Overall, it's still in pretty good condition. We do get, I did get a call from the, the company that built it or did the planning of it and says, you know, at 20 years is when all the communities start to redo these with either a brand-new one or refurbish one with recycled materials and, and that project now, today, if we were to build the same thing, we're looking at a half-million-dollar, you know, playground, so luckily through...
What did that cost, do you remember?
I don't have numbers on it. I think probably it's hard to say because there's so much volunteer time and effort into that.
It's crazy to think that was before his time.
It is.
Yes, it is.
Long before his time.
I think my first year was the first year the city took over maintaining, maintaining it because there was a ten-year like use agreement with a volunteer organization, so.
It was a very cool project at the time.
Yeah, and, and so, this will be painting the towers, staining and then adding wood chips in the engineered wood fiber surfacing. Along with that is another $15,000 for playground surfacing improvements. This is annual wood chip adding to playgrounds that have wood chips. Winaco Park, master plan north, master plan design and engineering is to kind of piggyback on the PCB remediation in the north lagoon and to look at what we can do on the north end of the park from Nichols Road up through Fireman's Park from kind of a master plan design area. So, obviously pedestrian paths are probably number-one priority from Greenway end of school to get over to the Fireman's Park Shelter and to loop up to the existing path that goes around the skate park and the pool. The athletic field orientation is going to be a big part of that. What do we do with the five, you know, baseball slash softball diamonds or four, I guess, total diamonds that are there and how we can better utilize that space for activities? Shoreline restoration, kind, coming up with kind of a really dynamic use of that north lagoon with shoreline plants, fishing areas, outlook areas, and then maybe this is the year that we'll decide what we want to do with that area that was dumped with all the dredge spoiling at the Blue Park. So we've kind of held off on that, but that's what this is, is to do design and engineering for possible construction in 2019 or depending on what the budget is, but this is the first kind of leg of the north side, which will be the easier side versus from south of Nichols Road to Winaco will be, I think, a, a much larger price take to it.
So, the, the, this, the 2019 part of it could be broken out into the dredging part and?
Poten-, yeah.
And other parts there.
Yeah, it'll just depend on, you know, my assumption or my understanding is the spoils from that dredging project have to be trucked offsite, so they're not going to be able to be stored onsite. There are some additional dredging that we would like to do that aren't affected with the PCBs that go around the, the corner, which is affecting kind of a backup of stormwater on the residence of Winaco Road to there, so it was intended to be a dry bed when there was no rain, but it's just the sediment is wholly back all the water. So, we would like to carry on some of that part of the dredging and then we would want to look at how those park improvements would be placed in, so we could just do dredging and shore, or shoreline restoration with that project or if we want to continue on and add in paths and athletics as well. But, we will, you know, we're trying to figure out how we can space out major improvements at Winaco and at Huska and not have them in the same year, so that'll be some of the discussion as we lead into the 2019 capital budget is where we lock in Winaco, Huska and Riverfront.
Any other questions?
Tree planting, we've increased that budget for replacement of Emerald Ash Bore trees. Our tree planting includes removal of trees in parks, planting and, and mulching, so that, that number I, I would anticipate will continue to rise. We are discussing at the Parks Board level of a, a policy to do and adopt an ash program in parks. Madison, City of Madison has a program where residents or neighbors can treat certain trees in Madison parks, but it's totally their responsibility to do for payment. That policy will be coming to council at some point in the next couple of months if it's approved at Parks Board, but we would be looking at select trees that we would even consider. Otherwise, each continuing year, we're seeing a, a bigger and bigger decline in some of these trees in the parks, so we do try to replant with bigger size diameter right away so we gain some of that, but I will say that this will be one of the biggest issues that we face in the city over the next decade is the replacement of mature trees from a variety of reasons of why they're failing health, but, you know, it's a huge reason why people love our parks as we have, you know, big mature trees. We've got some that are significantly failing now and some that will continue and it's the question of when you take them down versus when you replant, because every year you're not replanting a new tree, you're not getting that growth. But some of it will depend too, especially at Winaco Park, on getting our finalized master plan together so we don't plunk down a tree right in the middle of where we want to have a future path or building or something like that. Frostwoods Beach canoe kayak rack is adding an additional eight, eight canoe kayak rack to the beach area. That's our, our most popular spot to request to have a storage there. We will be adding a second one at Schluter Park that should be finished here before the snow flies. If this gets approved, we would be looking at some type of lottery system for residents to be able to get a chance to have one of these spots, because right now, it's kind of, once you're in, you're in. Once you get a spot, you're in and then there's a two-week window, if you have, if you decide not to renew your lease, that you can jockey for position at a different spot or a different park and then residents, then there's another window when residents can sign up for a spot and then there's the non-resident window. So, they are a very popular amenity, I think, in our park system to have and it is an ongoing revenue generator for the rec department. Next line item is benches, trash cans, bike racks, annual maintenance program, so picnic tables, trash cans, bike racks. If we get pads for the benches, associated costs with that, we have started looking at, you know, do we look at recycled materials for our picnic tables? It costs a lot of money. We can build a lot of wood picnic tables for the price of one and we move them around, you know, they, they get moved around quite a bit, you know, with the different special events and festivals that we have. Woodland Park management plan, this is actually a decrease in what we typically have for funding, so, you know, again, every year I say, I have a full-time staff that we don't pay in John Traver who does our, all of our volunteer work at Woodland Park and so, it's worked, right? You know, we've opened up the canopy, we've seen prairie grass growth on the Manona Drive side, we're seeing a lot of native flowers and wildflowers coming back and so that typical management has, is starting to go down. I don't know if it's ever going to like go away, especially when John decides to hang up his volunteer cleats and we'll have to start paying for prescribed burns and some, you know, spot treatments of some of the invasives there, but it has gone down this year. I, I would like to at least throw the bug out and you'll see it in the, in the coming years is that same type of management plan is needed at other parks. I'm talking Frostwoods, the woods right next to Frostwoods, I'm talking about Three Meadows Park that has a ton of invasives, talking about Lottis Park and the amount of shoreline plantings and things that we have in Schluter, so it may look, come back in another request as just an overall parks management plan and would have some of those areas listed, but when we do nothing... um, when we do nothing, we get a, a single culture of, you know, one dominant invasive species that will take over in some of these areas. Uh, gazebo electrical upgrades is the electrical panel utilized by the Manona Festival and then the Fall Festival and some of our special events. Um, the electric box is basically towards the end of its useful life. This would be a cost share with the Manona Festival Committee, um, to upgrade from basically a two hundred amp service to a four hundred amp service that would cover all of our existing electrical needs and allow for future expansion. So if we ever want to add lights along the path on the back forty or the west side of the lagoon, we could run electrical from there. Um, a lot of the outlets are bad. Uh, we use it for a couple of events a year, but it's, it's primary purpose is for the support to the Manona Festival.
Andy?
Have either of you talked to the Manona Festival about that, Koshir?
You know, just in general conversations, I think it's one that they understood that they were going to have to contribute some amount to it. You know, I talked with the electrician Jim Byer, who kind of serves a lot of different hats within the city, and, you know, we're giving him time to get that cost amount. And, and I think that's just something we write into the facility use agreement that we'll need to do with the festival. Because it is a, you know, it's probably like a seventy-five percent for one special event, but as we add to our existing special events or add to new special events, they're going to want to have those same type of electrical capabilities. What has happened in the past, I mean, you know, ten years ago or maybe seven years ago, the festival committee had talked about giving us some bridges in the park, and then that just kind of went away. And, I mean, it seems, which is fine, I mean, maybe that money went somewhere else, but it seems to me that electrical upgrade should be paid for by the festival committee. I, I mean, what rent do we collect on the festival?
Community service. Um, no, so I'm on the, while I was on the festival, and they've been in the red for the last four years. Uh, so I think this is their first year out of five that they've actually made money. Uh, and that's for varying reasons, whether it's weather or frankly, people aren't drinking beer as much, and that's where they used to get sixty-five thousand dollars, and now we barely break forty thousand. So, I mean, it's not just the city hasn't gotten money, no one's gotten money. I think they give away a thousand dollar scholarship to a high school student, that's about it, but, so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I do think that particular event is along with all of our special events is, is what we're working on on this kind of special event application and looking at what are the true costs the city, what are services that we just can't provide for some of these events? And then what are going to be fair and equitable costs moving forward for some of these events? And what point, at what point are we willing to subsidize events for the betterment of the community? And what point are we saying we need to charge for everything or nothing or somewhere in between? So we're dealing a little bit with it with the, um, all-city swim meet. So you'll see that facility use agreement coming through, and, and there will be a lot of fees at least recommended for, for us for the opportunity cost of not being able to have revenue for that event. Um, but on the flip side, we are bringing thousands of people into the community and showcasing, and it's an economic development tool, but it's not showing up on our Excel spreadsheet that we have here tonight for you.
Right, okay.
Anything else?
The last one. All right, so.
Made it in.
It made it in.
Isn't it completely down right now?
It is completely down.
Now the political completely.
Maybe no one misses it.
Maybe we will replace it.
I think it's been in the last four years that it's gotten pulled, but, um, the, the sign indicating Manona Wetland is now completely fallen over, and so this would be to replace it. So the first project is in conjunction with the replacement of our pool chemical storage unit. On the northeast side of the community center, we have a chemical unit where we store our meratic acid for the pool. The parking lot sidewalk repairs portion is to reroute the path that goes in front of the community center and wraps around the backside towards the water slide. There's a set of stairs right there and a big hill. And it's a very challenging area for people to get up and stay safe, um, and also for maintaining, especially in the wintertime with snow removal. And so this project on the community center side is going to be, um, re-grading some of that area to be able to get an ADA path swing down and around. It'll go right next to the water slide and then connect with that asphalt path, um, that's going around the pool. And so we'll have a nice transition area where if you're walking from Greenway down the path and you want to go to the library or the community center, you can stay on sidewalk the whole time. You don't have to go out into the road. It's especially nice for kids biking to the pool that have to go around, um, from people that live on different streets in that area. But no, it's, we, we looked at it at a couple of different ways. Um, you know, we're hosting all-city swim meet. We, we definitely have, at least from my point of view, um, but a concern for safety in that area is cars are driving around the parking lot to Winnicott School, and then how we can kind of get these safe routes to parks, safe routes to city facilities. Um, so it's a little, a little bit of both, but that, it's broken up into two budgets, but it will be one project. So this project's in design, the final design phases now. And so I can send those documents out if, uh, you'd like to take a look at them. The plan is that we would bid out that project, this project and the, um, boat launch project at one time. So that would be one, one big project for cost-saving measures.
Questions?
Okay. After-school program improvements, this would be contingent upon what's coming down the pike in the operating budget to uh, offer a after-school program at the community center in fall of two thousand eighteen, so two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. This would be retrofitting, um, the lounge room to be able to have a, a sink and some other program necessities that we need to offer this after-school program that you'll be hearing about sometime soon.
And I have told Jake that if, the only way I would support doing it is if it's a self-supporting, uh, program. So I think this should in theory be our only cost for this. Is that right? Is this equipment here?
For the, yeah, for the first, yep, for upgrading the, the rooms for storage and tables and chairs.
But in terms of salary for increased staff or any of that, that needs to come from the?
That's coming from, yeah, program.
Revenue.
Revenue, correct. That's it for things.
One twelve.
So chemical storage project, we talked a little bit about, um, safety maintenance related item. Uh, water slide inspection is mandated by the state every five years, and there's a placeholder in there for any repairs that might be needed based on that inspection report. Um, locker room concession stand, epoxy floors and painting, um, is another maintenance type of item to keep people safe in the pool. You know, the pool's creeping up on thirty years in twenty twenty-three, so we're five years away. Um, you know, we're getting to that point, but, you know, this council's been awesome in the, uh, support and funding for ongoing maintenance, which has kept the pool in really good shape. It's actually being painted right now, um, as part of the twenty seventeen capital budget. So I, we say that is like a thirty year, like, oh, we have to, I don't think it's going to be, you know, five more years and we're going to have to spend five million dollars in the pool, but we should start that conversation over the next four, three, four, or five years, somewhere in there, and what we would like to envision for the next thirty years in the pool. But these are, these are the type of items that help keep us operating as, as we do, um, when we can up, make these annual repairs or semi-annual repairs. The robot cleaner, um, is going to let me sleep nicely at night and not get texts and phone calls at twelve-thirty that our equipment's not working. Um, we've had a robot cleaner in the past, about seven, eight years ago. Of course, technology has changed dramatically and they're much better now, and um, these are ones that you can just put in and it learns your pool system and cleans it out. With the updated hours that we have, we're basically six A to nine P with swimmers in the water. So to be able to effectively get all that stuff out of the bottom of the pool, you generally have to let it settle down. So our, our manual cleaners will come in at nine or ten at night, but they're not capturing all the soils and all the fun stuff that you don't want to think about than going to swimming pools necessarily in the bottom. So a better time would be like three in the morning, you know, but I don't think our residents would like to have the lights of the pool on at three in the morning. So this will allow for that, and we can still continue to have these great hours that we have for our pool. Membership card printers are, um, the existing, we have one membership card printer that sits in our office at Park and Rec. That's not being supported anymore. Um, we'd like to have an additional one down at the pool, so we can crank these things out faster. Um, we are investigating a, a switch-over of software systems for next year. These would be compatible with what the, we're looking at for a software system, but it would help with, um, our administrative time that's spent on cranking these passes out, which is generally, you know, Memorial Day through the second week in June when we're very, very busy with all sorts of stuff.
How, how old is the grant pass?
Printer, it's nine years old.
So this would be a second one?
Yeah, this would be replacing one, this would be two. So replacing the original and then adding a second one. Deck furniture is an annual, we replace twenty to thirty Chase Lounge chairs and some of the Adirondack chairs every year. And the last one is a security locker. So I think originally we had the old basket system with a like metal clip that went in your swimsuit, put in the guard office. People, people don't like using those anymore for some reason. But they do ask for secure lockers, so we're not, uh, you know, we do have thefts every once in a while from our pool. We don't have the staff to walk around and watch people's stuff for them, or we don't have the room necessarily in our own guard office to put people's personal belongings. So this is to have two ni- uh, nine lockers, so a total of eighteen small lockers that people could put quarters in and like you have at the water parks and store your stuff that would be outside on the pool deck.
Any other questions for Jake?
Record time.
Thank you very much. Poor Brad come up here so he can go home.
Page twenty-four is administration.
So our buildings, April and Brad, are you going to be talking about this too, April, or is, I don't know if you want?
You want to start administration because it's her car and then we build the buildings?
What page are we on, Mike?
Twenty-six.
Twenty, yeah, twenty-six is the description.
Our administration staff is using a two thousand six Ford Escape, um, that's been through about three departments already. So, um, it's, I believe in a rank of twenty-seven, which qualifies for replacement, and it's getting, um, to be needing an exhaust and brake line replacement. So we talked about, um, replacing that with a, a new Ford Escape.
And I had thought possibly Jake had requested another truck for park staff, that maybe they could try using this Escape for a year or two and because they don't, it's something they need to haul equipment around and things, but they could use this, hopefully they could use this size.
At least for a li- for a little while and.
Since we aren't getting the trucks.
Yeah.
Only one.
Right.
Only one, yes. But we, we all use it. Page twenty-eight, um, City Hall building improvements. Um, this is a line I kind of looked at. Um, the last few years is kind of all over the place, but, um, there's always repairs and, and things that need replacing out at City Hall. So, um, this is a line to take care of some of those repairs, um, and some minor improvements. Page thirty is, um, four thousand dollars is included for the Bray task order. Um, you heard the presentation, this will be an update and, um, primarily identify potential sites for any relocations of any, um, facilities that could move and, and analyzing at least two of those sites. So it sort of begins that process of looking at long-term, um, building replacement, taking that to the next level. And stop me anytime. Um, page thirty-one, um, LED retrofit project. Brad has done a lot of, um, footwork with Jim Byer, and there's a very long spreadsheet that goes along behind this. But we looked at trying to get the biggest bang for the buck, and the city facilities that are included in this round would be the police department, fire department, administrative offices, um, and these would include the garage bays. And also, it doesn't state that here, but the outdoor lighting at the library that's under the overhang. And what we would do with the administrative office lights that are fairly recent, um, and our LED, is we would replace those out at the community and senior center, um, which would have some energy savings over here, but we can get some better savings in administration with the smart sensors, technologies, and, um, some of that daylight harvesting, um, to in- uh, increase our energy savings even more. Um, anything to add to that, Brad?
Yeah, um, this project came about originally actually due to safety issues over at the fire department, and, uh, the project was not originally designed in the fire department garage bay to be a cost savings project. It was meant for more lighting, uh, to come down into the garage bays because the, uh, staff there were having issues being able to actually see into the garage bay itself as they're backing their equipment in. During a sunny day, uh, the garage is extremely dark on the inside, and the difference between the lighting on the outside and the inside creates a, uh, shadow effect. And looking through the rearview mirrors, it's almost impossible to see what you're backing into. You can see the outline of the garage doors, but you can't actually see anything inside the garage itself. Um, so for the safety of the staff over there and the ease of just being able to back the trucks in, um, that was one of the reasons it was brought up. And then it was brought to our attention that, um, the lighting along the backside of that garage is extremely old, original to the public works garage itself, uh, and is super inefficient. Uh, they also do not have any smart controls whatsoever in that garage bay. So right now, when the, um, staff leave on a call, uh, the lights stay on permanently until they get back. Um, with this process, uh, the lighting would turn on with the motion of the garage door. Um, and if you did have the lights on, on the switch, or as the staff were coming down the stairs into the bay, uh, the lights would flip on just due to motion sensor technology. So save money in the long run. For instance, if they have a call that's over an hour, an hour and a half, or two hours, that they're out in the field, uh, those sensors would kick the lights off after fifteen minutes, thirty minutes, an hour, whatever they wanted to set it at. So, uh, as for the rest of the project, um, the lighting in the, uh, current administrative wing, uh, was a kind of a, um, slingshot type of a project. We had leftover money from grant program, uh, and that money was put to good use in putting LEDs in. Um, however, they only retrofitted what was there, and they didn't, uh, install any type of, uh, smart lighting technology. There are no smart controls in the admin wing. Uh, and at this point, there was fluorescents there. While fluorescents don't add or have as many lumens or light per square foot as LEDs do, so we replaced every fluorescent fixture. So we replaced every fluorescent fixture with LEDs and now there's too much light in the admin wing. To the point of eye exhaustion after looking at a computer screen, which administrative staff end up doing a lot, you know, all day. You tend to get eye fatigue and it's a very real issue. I can admit to it. The idea of this project then would be to add smart controls that would dim automatically the lights in your office based on how much light was coming through those large windows that are on the one side of the admin wing. We would also de-lamp, which means we would actually remove fixtures that are unnecessary and add dimming controls so that to each admin's personal preference, they can or otherwise dim the lighting based on what they need or what they feel they need in those areas, in those offices. The idea behind that as well is the fact that that facility is not planned for removal or replacement or otherwise. And we intend to see the cost savings in that particular wing and in all of City Hall pay for that project within at least five years is my estimation, just doing some rough estimates with numbers that I got from this. Most likely, you end up saving roughly between, on a very low estimate, 30 to 40% per fixture that you retrofit. And that does not include the savings that you get from smart controls. So all in all, for the most part, you see a payback for the project between three and five, three and six years. So it's money well spent for the most part, I would say.
And basically, when they started working on this, Brad and Jim Byer, you looked at like every light fixture in the city buildings, right? I mean, so Jim came back, I mean, this took a few months, with this huge spreadsheet covering replacing all of them. And then we kind of went through it and picked out some areas that we'd go with first, but there's still more to do. But I mean, it's, I guess I just wanted to point out that it's all been looked at by a licensed electrician and...
That's true.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. All by, all pro bono volunteer, so thank you, Jim.
So thank you, Jim.
Yes. The only other part I would add is that I like to call this phase one. I don't want it to be like, oh, we're only doing these facilities. The plan is to do the facilities as a whole, hopefully. And just to phase this in and get, get some things done now and then think about the larger projects, which would be the library and public works garage for, you know, to plan those a little bit more thoroughly to take a closer look at them because they are somewhat particular. The lighting in this facility is, is a mix match of lighting from 1960 and then lighting from early 2000. And to make sure that some of the ornamental lighting is retrofitted with the correct type of light so that they don't look ridiculous afterwards is, you know, it's kind of key. And also, this project is eligible for folks-on-energy incentives. That being said, you have to fund the entire project and then you get reimbursed afterwards. You can't, you have to, it's a task. So those incentives are dependent on the type of lighting and the type of project that you want to go forward with. So that, that information can come at a future date.
So we can't give you a nice, clean 50/50 cost-sharing type thing? It, it's not quite that simple, unfortunately.
No, it's based on a per fixture basis and per lamp basis, so.
And I might point out that this is a great sustainability project, so there you go.
This will hopefully help us get closer to that 25 by 25 goal.
That's correct. Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more note, if you may. The dispatch area in the police department is also a fairly... It's, the lighting in there is just very awkward for the space. There's areas that are extremely dark and shadowed. And then there's areas that are extremely light that don't need to be necessarily. And the idea behind that room, that drove doing LEDs in the police department as well. And then, like April said, the LED strips that were put in the admin wing won't just get discarded. We'll reuse them in the community center and all fixtures that they are able to be retrofitted into. We've talked tonight about the possibility of the community center being on the list of of facilities to be replaced or retrofitted or otherwise. So this would be a good reuse of those LEDs and save money at the same time. Maybe it's not as permanent of a fix that the community center could use in terms of lighting, but it'd be better than doing nothing at this point.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Bit of a band-aid, but it works.
Just a quick thing, the lights he's talking about, they were replaced. We had a grant money, so the money, LED lights that were put in the City Hall, got it for free basically, because they had a grant to cover the whole cost. So they're the ones getting moved for the community center and it's what we've been talking about, these buildings. We're not replacing, we want to figure out what we're going to do with the building first before we put new lights in there. But so really, we're getting the free lights down from before into the community center.
Win-win all the way.
Any questions about any of the building things? April?
City Hall HVAC is the last item we have.
Oh, that's right.
Yep, and I will let Brad take that one away.
Okay. I got a updated, it's a fairly rough estimate, but we've seen an estimate from Kilgust. I'm going to give the background. One of our AC units on the top of City Hall was found to be running consistently all throughout or at least as far as we understand it, throughout the entire winter last year. It was fighting the heating unit or the heating at the same time. That is the unit that serves the admin wing, the conference room, the radio station and the main atrium, or I'm sorry, foyer area. Obviously, that's extremely inefficient. We found it after the fact this last spring. The problem is fixed temporarily at this point in time, but we also found that that particular AC unit now has mechanical issues for good reason. So it, it, it does need to be replaced at this point.
How old is this unit?
This unit is 13 years old. All the units at City Hall, except for the one on the ground level, are 13 years old. So there's two units on the roof right next to each other and there's one on the ground level. The one on the ground level was replaced just after this, those two on the roof. The, the efficient life cycle of an AC unit from that period in time is between 15 and 17 years, as I understand it, or I've been informed. So it's basically at the end of its life cycle or efficient life cycle to the point where you'll start to see higher maintenance costs year to year on those units. Also, the units, and I forgot to mention this before, the units on the rooftop here at the library and the units that we use at City Hall and for that matter, the ones that are at the community center all use what's called R22 refrigerant. R22 refrigerant is no longer allowed to be used on new facilities or in new AC and HVAC systems. The refrigerant is a, highly degradable to the environment. It's also, because it's no longer in production, extremely expensive to replace because they aren't producing it anymore. So as maintenance costs start to accrue, you almost always end up having to replace or re-put new refrigerant into these systems. They leak or otherwise, they get used up, it evaporates. And so you'll see even more exponentially increasing costs in the future on that. So we were quoted by Kilgust $40,000 for the one AC unit replacement, replacing of the tubing that goes to the AC unit, the refrigerant and some of the electrical components for just the one unit on the rooftop. I, I got a second opinion from Commercial Air because they were here to look at the library as well because we thought that this prices were somewhat steep from Kilgust. I got a quote for $40,000 to replace both units on top of City Hall. And if you add in the balancing that you would do afterwards, it's around $5,000. 7% contingency then would put both unit replacements at $48,000, $48,200. I, I know that only one is in the budget at this point in time. I think that it would, for cost efficiencies, if you can do both or at the same time, you don't have to do two projects. You don't have to bid it twice if we can.
Didn't you say something about having to pay for a crane to come in?
And you have to mobilize a crane and have them, so you'd have to do it again with, you know, who knows? Maybe, maybe five years it lasts. So it, you're looking at, within the next five years, most likely, you'd have to replace it anyway. So that's, that's the update for those units. It's up to you what you think is the best course of action, so.
Any questions?
Is there any efficiency, I mean, typically with air conditioning in particular, things have gotten a lot more efficient over the last 10 years, so.
That's, yeah, that's correct. I apologize. I didn't, I didn't think to mention it before, but that's true. There, you get much more efficient with newer equipment than what we have currently.
Especially if you don't run it all winter.
True. And, yeah. So I would, I haven't had the chance yet, but I would like to look into potential grant programs for energy innovation projects. I know that they exist. I don't know a lot about them at this point in time, but I would assume that something like these projects would probably be applicable for some sort of energy incentive funding grant program. So I'll look into that and get back to you.
Anything else?
I have one quick question. So when we talked about the HVAC unit for the library and we talked about this unit, the quotes from Kilgust were significantly higher. And I know you said that our service contract for the library is through them as well. Is that correct?
That's correct.
This may be a question.
And City Hall, correct.
That's correct.
Yep.
Would we want to explore possibly quotes for service contracts from these other vendors because there seems to be such a significant difference in price?
That was my direction to, to the public works staff to input it all in one contract in one year because they're on staggered contracts right now. So we're just waiting, I think, for the library one to expire, but that will be soon.
The end of this year.
That's the end of this year, right.
So.
And then we'd go in for bid, but I think we...
So we're on it.
Just to clarify, the quote from Kilgust includes an extremely comprehensive package. It's literally the entire system. So it is very different from what we got from Commercial Air because...
For the library?
For the library.
For the libraries.
For City Hall, the only difference is a, what they call an evaporator coil. And what we found out during inspection is that the evaporator coil in City Hall for both AC units up on top and the one outside, they all run through the same evaporator coil, is that it's very large. It's in an extremely difficult location to maintain it or to remove it. And by first look and during inspection, it looks as though the coil won't fit out of the maintenance room at this point in time. And so we're not sure at this point exactly how we're going to replace it, if we actually do need to replace it. And so Commercial Air's proposal or estimate does not include replacing that coil. It includes servicing it, but not replacing it. So there, and which may be the difference in cost between, between the two projects, between Kilgust's estimate and, and Commercial Air.
Any other questions? Thank you, Brad. I think you can go home now.
He should get a prize.
Thank you for hanging around.
The worst part is I got a dentist appointment at 7:00 AM.
Oh, no.
And I haven't been there in six years.
Oh, no. Good luck with that.
Take an extra cookie.
Yeah.
Yes. Take some soda, too.
Okay, well, I think our next step is to, I think Mark wants amendments by the 27th of September.
Yeah, so anybody who has amendment, get them by the 27th. Just so, like I said, just send me an email. You want an ad or something, I'll put it together and send it back to you to verify it with you.
We're going to have two reads of this, though.
We'll have two reads. So if you'd like to get to the first read.
That's true, you could go.
And granted, again, if you don't get it for the first read and do it for the second, we'll get it in there.
It'd be nice to have them for the first read, though.
For the first read would be the 27th.
So the first read will be then at our first council meeting in October, October 2nd. And then hopefully we approve the budget on the 16th.
So it won't be next week?
No.
Correct, no.
I will put in my usual pitch, though, for city council independence that you can make amendments as late as on the floor
That is true.
of the meeting where the budget's adopted, so.
And we have done that.
It's tidier to do it earlier.
So anything else? Okay, let's go home.